Sorry. No, it's, it's. We're back. All right, we apologize to our viewers. We had some technical difficulties. I believe we are back. I'm hoping the audio quality is a little bit better. I'm trying to speak loudly through the mask, so let's, let's hope that the audio quality is better. Jean, we were in the middle of your comments. I'm sorry that happened.
No, no.
Start off maybe from the middle or the beginning or wherever you want.
Okay. I'm going to reiterate the first two real quick because I can't tell where I chopped out. So on the baseball lights, we need to move forward. We need to keep this on the agenda, I think, every time until we get resolution on this because the reality is so much of this has to be done and decisions have to be made by this board and we need to do it on a timely basis. I think it might have the mandate that we got from town meeting. And when I say what we have to do, we have to cut, you know, get to brass tacks both in terms of the process that we want to move forward with as well as making sure that the baseball light supporters and the neighbors have a clear sense of that and have continued engagement and opportunity to weigh in. Because I think, as we can tell by the multiple emails we've gotten today from folks who support the lights asking us to put this on the agenda as well as from neighbors who equally want to have answers, I think we need to do it for them once and for all and move forward decisively. So that's point one. Point two, communications, we as the board need to step up, I think, and really support our committees that are really executing our goals and try to figure out, to Diane's point, a better way to communicate these complicated topics and break them down and, again, help support that both at town meeting and outside of the town meeting. Because we know that there's a lot of meetings that are happening on a weekly, monthly, if not daily basis with some of this, but perhaps it's not reaching everyone that it needs to in the way it needs to reach them. So we need to continue to reinforce communication. National grid, I think we need to continue to focus on national grid, including taking a trip to Brockton in January before we start to get into similar situations with outages and storms. And then finally, I would continue to press, and I know that there's a lot going on, but from an agenda standpoint or separate meeting, I think we need to continue to, again, have the select board, capital budget and advisory, really try to work together in a collaborative way and come together on our finances. It's a zero-sum game. We've got a limited pot of money. We have to start making hard decisions. We know some of the money and how it's been allocated now from town meeting, which provides us with some guidance, but I think if we want to actually make some of these projects happen that we're talking about, we have to start communicating with each other, which is, again, a key takeaway from last night's meeting, to really make this happen responsibly. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Cory?
Yeah, thanks. You know, my takeaways from last night, there's, there's a word that some of you may have heard of called FUD, which stands for fear, uncertainty and doubt. And that's a, it's an effective tool because it, it causes people to, to question things. And I thought last night we saw FUD in action. And I do think that, I think all my colleagues said previously, you know, there was a good deal of misinformation that was being spread. I can't under, I can't speak to why, whether it was known, unknown, just misunderstandings, but it was misinformation. And I think that created uncertainty and doubt. It really prevented the town from thinking clearly about what was in front of them. And I know that Diane and Jean touched upon this, but I, I want to be even stronger about it. I think us as a board, I think we failed. I think, you know, one of the discussions that I have most often with residents is about concerns of overdevelopment. There were four houses that just went on my private way. What can I do about it? Nothing right now. There's a new development that went up somewhere else. What can the town do about it? Nothing. More than any other discussion, more than baseball lights, believe it or not, is what are we going to do about development? And how do we do it in a smart way? And that's our job, and I think that's the job that the town has expected us to do. And by not taking the reins and frankly, you know, we left it to some appointed members to message this for us. And that wasn't right. I mean, we failed. The fact that we didn't speak, I think, was, was a failure on our part. The fact that we didn't communicate exactly what this did. I think, you know, we all got caught up in doing a good job considering, and we lost sight of the viewpoint of the rest of the town. I, I think we can talk about communications goes all we want, but just that came not to us. That was our failure. I do think there's a lot of takeaways, but I think, you know, outside of us doing a better job, I think the board has to do a better job of being factual and clear and making, giving people correct information and correct expectations. And we need to avoid getting down, you know, we need to be very clear about what we're doing and why we're doing it because it's important. That's what I got. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cory. And I agree with what was said here, and I want to reiterate that communication was the number one goal the select board decided on for these reasons, but especially, I think, what we saw last night. One thing that wasn't mentioned yet in terms of communication, there were a lot of complaints from people who didn't want to come in person last night, who maybe didn't feel safe. And we're, we're also getting complaints about people that don't only want to attend on Zoom and want the option to come in person. So I think that moving forward, really working on the technology and the ability to have more hybrid meetings where we have both in-person and virtual options for the town, I think is critical. I think we need to give as many chances as possible in as many venues as possible, whether it's virtually or in-person, for citizens and voters to come speak. And I think we can do a better job at reminding everyone when those meetings are. So that is one thing I wanted to mention. I also wanted to give a shout out to Larry in the Chamber of Commerce and everyone that participated in stroll. It was fantastic. We had such good turnout. Another special shout out to our facilities for doing a beautiful tree lighting. I know that the new tree on the pond is a big hit. I think it looks great. And just seeing everyone out and about for stroll was really great. We ended up having good weather. It was warm, and that was wonderful. So thank you to everyone who participated. Thank you to all the local businesses who participated. It was a really wonderful night. And then just a personal shout out to Cohasset's newest resident, my new nephew. Yes, he was born on Tuesday, on Sunday night. His name is Chip Bergman, and he just got home, and he's our newest resident, and he might be watching right now. Hi, Chip. So yes, say hi to Chip. I can't wait for him to be a registered voter, but that's very exciting news. All right, moving on to Town Manager Upstate and then our library story trail.
Very quickly, again, the staff had a lot of fun last week on a variety of projects. The facilities, lighting, I think, is one of the things the team really got together, had a lot of fun building that platform, getting the tree set out. I think it was a really great example of what people can do fun creatively. So many thanks to the facilities that took care of that. Staff put together REES, something they did last year, and they'll put together my departments, and they will distribute it to seniors in need, to senior staff. I think that's a great, a great example of holiday spirit and this door decorating. So if you find yourself in the building in town hall, wander by, and all departments are trying to do themselves a creative holiday doors, so they're having a little fun with that in town hall. Again, I'll also thank everyone who participated in town meeting last night. Our acting chancellor, Kim Roy, reports 266 residents took part. That's the largest participation in special town meetings since 2012.
Wow.
So it was a good turnout. The, an update on COVID-19 in this very room. There was a COVID-19 clinic yesterday. There'll be another one next Monday, a booster clinic on the 20th. Sign up is online. You can get the link on the front page of the town website. You can, there's also links available on Facebook. There's going to be a, so there's a clinic next Monday here in the afternoon, again, under four. On January 4th, there'll be a regional clinic involving Cohasset, Cituit, Hall and Hayam, and that will be in Hayam. I, I have to double check on the exact location. You should get information on that on our, coming up on our website.
Right.
So there'll be another, there'll be a regional booster clinic on January 4th. And there'll be more information on how to register, town's website. And again, just to follow up on what the select, select member, DePaul, we're looking to set up that, that date for the, the board, the capital advisory and select boards, so sometime in the July, January. So you already have communications meeting.
Yeah.
So this will be, you know, so we'll, we'll pull everyone to get a, to get a date.
Yep.
For that. That is my.
Okay, wonderful. All right, tell us about the, oh, sorry.
I thought this was an opportunity where we were able to discuss things with Town Manager.
Well, we have that on the agenda after the library story trail. If that's what you.
No, no, this, this is, I was talking about Town Manager update. It's normally a time when we get to ask questions of the Town Manager.
Okay.
Which has been in the past. Because if, you know, I, I, my understanding on the emergency Director of Civil Defense and Emergency Preparedness, now, Chris, you just said that there's been discussions. You haven't told anybody they're being replaced, and you haven't decided. Have you put like something out on the Fire Chief, the Fire Chief proposal that would say they would be head of that? Could you tell us exactly what you've done?
So, so no one's being replaced, so I don't, I don't want anyone to have that confusion. The, the town has long run in a, in a, in a great collaborative process. There's wonderful volunteers with CIR, the Director of Emergency Management has always been a volunteer to set up a store. At the same time, as the demands have become greater and greater, the Fire Chief has become really the lead. And, and since the FEMA process went into effect, which, which sets up the whole incident command process, when there's an actual emergency, the Fire Chief has become the incident commander. So, and again, there's, there's a, this kind of a natural kind of collaboration across the process. So that said, because of the demands of modern emergency management, the complications of storms, the Fire Department is the best department that's equipped for that, and it's always taken the lead for emergency management perspective. As you saw yourself, there's a team starring emergencies, right, in the Emergency Operations Center at the Deer Hill School. And we collaborate and we, and we walk out and talk about things in process or planning. That said, any Fire Chief in the modern world has to have emergency management experience. That was, so, so that, so that's.
Okay.
We've gone on for a while. Have you put that position of Director of Civil Defense incorporated in a Fire Chief proposal? Is that incorporated?
The, the, the.
Yes or no?
The Director of Civil Defense is a 1950s era term, and one of the things that the board is going to need to consider in the new year is re, is updating, and something we're going to have a conversation on, is updating the bylaws, the practical realities of the Fire Chief as the incident commander during a, an emergency, because of the, the staff they have and the training they have. That's going to continue. The, the, there's no, there's no plans on my part to make any changes today because I can't.
So we need to discuss this.
The select board has.
We need to discuss this in January.
Right, I think that there, there needs to be an update to the bylaws. They're, they're, they're from the 50s, and they need to update to the realities of the modern, the modern realities of fighting, of dealing with emergencies. And again, this is the, this is the moment. Glenn and I have talked about this in person, about how to transition, how to figure out a way to do it. Not to, not to push Glenn aside by any means, but because the, it's always worked very formally. It's one of the wonderful things about class, is when they just send formal national files, the paper doesn't matter, right? The reality is getting people help and getting things together. So it's time that the bylaws have an update, that need to be updated on emergency management. Like that, that is, there's no question.
And that would.
I have some questions here too, but I think we need to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I feel like this needs to be an agenda item, Jack.
I think we just need to, you know, because I want to ask questions too.
Yeah, so this is.
But I do want to clarify, again, Director of Civil Defense.
He answered the question though.
Is, is a prerogative of the board of select. I just want. So you're correct that the bylaws need to be changed.
Yeah, so. Let's, let's get the, we can chat with council about this. Let's get the bylaws and maybe have Glenn and our current Fire Chief.
Right here.
To come visit us in January.
Right here. My point.
What do you mean, right there?
I have the bylaws.
Right, but we need to change them, like a lot of our bylaws, like our zoning laws, we're finding that they're decades behind, it sounds like.
Just the point of, I mean, this is an agenda item discussion. It's not on the agenda. This, the, the point of these two updates on our agenda historically has been to kind of talk about the things we just talked about, which quick summations and non-substantive. So I think this is.
This is substantive enough. It needs, yes. So I'll repeat again, it's going on the agenda for January and/or February. Chris, do we have anything else? Can we move on to the library story trail?
I do not have anything else.
Okay, tell us about the story trail.
I'd like to have Megan James come up, she's our library director.
Hi, Megan.
I will play a prop man here.
Okay. It's great to see you, Megan.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for having me. Happy to be here.
The library is always busy doing fun things, so we're excited to hear what this new project is.
Great. We have.
In a Christmas tree.
I love props.
And innovation. We had a little innovation.
Okay. You have our attention.
Thank you. I see Tracy's putting up a, a pie.
Spin it so the, the public can view this on a full screen.
It's a lot, it's very, very.
Yeah, it's blank, it's not a screen yet, okay. All right, tell us about this.
So the library has started a project to do a story walk, and this idea started to populate a little bit during COVID. We were trying, we were closed, building was closed, and we were trying to figure out the best way to continue to stay relevant. So we did curbside pickups, we did programs on YouTube, and this is another project we started working on because we still wanted to be front and center in the public eye. So we started writing grants for a story walk. And a story walk is a, you know, a row of displays, if you will, that show a picture book as you walk down a trail. So this was created by Ann Ferguson of Montpelier, Vermont. So this unfortunately was not our brainchild, so we're, we're copycatting, catatting a little bit. But we're hoping to put a story walk in the common. And this story walk was sponsored by the Cultural Council and the Friends of the Cohasset Library helped pay for this as well. So the way that this works is it needs to be on the left-hand side of a walking trail because as you read a book, you read it left to right. So I did want to start it coming from the, the village, but unfortunately, it's a book wouldn't read correctly, so. So we're starting on the opposite side of the common, and we're hoping to go down the, this walkway of the common and then go through the middle so that the children can walk through the path of the common, or anybody of course, and enjoy a story. So this is our prototype. The story walks actually normally put into the ground as a permanent fixture, but we wanted to create something that was mobile. So I worked with Nick from Facilities, and we were trying to come up with something that was inexpensive but also safe to have out. So we thought of Christmas tree stand. Built to hold something that's large, upright. We're also going to use stakes to secure on the sides as well. But we pictured this in the common for, you know, two months and then have it travel somewhere else. The story that we'd like to use is Share Some Kindness and Bring Some Light. It's a great winter story about a girl and her best friend Bear and how they kind of discover the true meaning of kindness. It's really adorable. And this is Nadeem, our Assistant Facilities Director, showing off how fabulous our prototype is. So I hope that you would consider allowing us to do this for a month or two in the common so that the public can enjoy a story.
It's a very cute idea. Are we thinking of keeping that book the whole time, or are you thinking about switching up the books?
So in the, for the first two months, we'd like to keep the same.
Okay.
And then I'm not sure if it will travel somewhere, another location, or stay in the common. I don't want to overstay our welcome in the common, but we're hoping to switch out the story quarterly depending on where.
Okay. I think it's a really cute idea, and I think people would really like it. Anyone on the board have questions? Cory?
Just a quick question. Did you guys have a chance to reach out to the historical commission for the common just to be sure that they've, they've got the green stamp from them as well on this?
We haven't yet, but I will.
Well, we can start from us, but yeah, certainly Luke and that they've always been supportive.
Yeah, the Cohasset Common Historic District.
There's too many words. Yeah.
But I think the non-permanence will be a selling factor too for a lot of people. So I think the fact that it won't be permanent.
And all, all the programs, I mean, we, we took advantage of all the programs you had with the pandemic, I mean, you know, four to three-year-old, the books to go, the, the stuff online, the other kids, I mean, it was such a ray of sunshine. So thanks to your whole staff.
Diane?
Just a question in terms of the months, like what are you thinking, like March and April?
So we'd like to put this up as soon as December 20th, and then keep it through the end of January is what I was thinking. I'm happy to have it there longer, but again, I just don't want to.
I'm also worried just about the snow.
I was thinking about, you know, if there's a snowstorm, is that going to impact, you
know, their, whatever.
I know what you mean. Have to put a certain amount of footage off the walkway so that it can be plowed, but other than that, it's, it's dirty.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I've actually seen it done in other towns, including ones that get far in excess of snow than we get, including during the winter. So I think it probably will work out, and it's great to do it on the common near the daycare too.
Right.
It will work out really nicely, and so I'm.
Okay, it, it seems like, yeah, Jack.
I think it's a great idea. Brings a little adventure into reading. It gives it so the kids can come out, they can enjoy our common, they can celebrate reading. I think it's a great idea, and I think the library is doing very well, and I'd like to move if we approve it.
Okay. Do we need a specific link? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right, seems like.
I guess if you would do it for December 20th through January 31st.
That's fine.
Okay.
So amended.
All right. All those in favor of approving the library story trail for those dates just mentioned, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Megan. We're really excited. Let us know when it's set up. We'll come, get a photo op and look at it. All right, very exciting and creative. Thank you to the library for all they do. All right, next on the agenda, our town council discussion of the process of the Town Manager contract renewal, which started in our last meeting, and we, I believe we have Brian Mazer.
I am up here. Where would you like me to sit?
Yes, right up here.
Good evening.
Next to Chris. Thank you for coming, Brian.
Sure, my pleasure. How's everybody?
We're good. It's a busy week. We had town meeting last night.
Lauren mentioned that you guys had a spirited town meeting.
And it was great seeing Lauren last night. So really, we just want to go over with you. I know you've gone over the, this entire contract situation and what's going on. And we as the board, as a reminder, we voted to start negotiations last meeting, and we appointed Diane and Jean as the subcommittee on this. So really just wanted to get clarification from you on this process and what we need to do moving forward and all that stuff.
Okay, sure, yeah. I can, I think I can be brief.
Okay.
If the subcommittee has already formed and you're in the process of negotiating with, with the Town Manager, separate and apart from that, I know that you have, I think it's until January 12th, maybe of 2022.
Yes.
Wish to vote. And I know that that question came up at the last board meeting. I watched the tape about whether or not there was a requirement or a need under the provisions of the Town Manager Act to establish a screening committee at this time. And from our position or really in looking at the, the act as a whole, right? And in trying to read all of the provisions of the act so that they all have meaning and effect, if you, in, in, in light of the fact that you have the ability to appoint a manager to successive terms, if the board has voted to initiate the process of negotiating with the Town Manager, in our opinion, the only times or the only really need in which you would then, you, you would form a screening committee would be if there was some breakdown in those negotiations and there was a decision not to renew the contract or renew the Town Manager for a successive term. In practice, in, in my experience in, in, in historically dealing with this with screening committees, screening committees are formed when there's a vacancy or an anticipated vacancy in the office. You don't have that right now because you are actively engaged in negotiations with the Town Manager. So again, if those negotiations, excuse me, if those negotiations were to break down and there was going to be an expiration of the term and of the employment, you would then form that screening committee. But at the present time, you know, really not a need to do so because you're actively engaged in negotiations with them.
Right, and negotiations can break down at any point, including after the 12th of January. Right? So that's something that can happen as the negotiation process is going.
Sure.
Correct? Okay.
So.
Hold on, Diane and then Jack, get your hand up first.
No, just, I just want to clarify on the January 12th date, which is, my understanding is the, the year, the last year the contract begins on January 12th, but the obligation within, I think it's within the contract is for us to, for Chris to at least inform us to make a decision about whether to enter into negotiations by December, 30 days prior to that January 12th.
Right, which happened at the last meeting.
Exactly. So the actual deadline, the actual date certain at this point in the calendar of, of this is December 12th, and we took a vote prior to that. I guess my next question is just for clarification. Is there, is there any other dates going forward that we need to take certain actions on?
From my recollection, the contract language, no.
Great, thank you. Okay, Jack?
Yeah, no, I, I've read all of the relevant documents, and I'm the one who brought, brought it up. We do have the ability to have an open review process. The, the board, without considering that, did in fact, as you said, did in fact move to go in immediately and do negotiations. But there are in town bylaws and in the Town Manager Act reference to a review committee. And as I said two weeks ago, that the select board could in fact say, we're not going to do that and move forward with this. Personally, I'm very disappointed that the board did decide to go forward without, without any public review, without any public meetings, without any public discussion. But it is true that this board of selectmen does have the prerogative to not involve the town or to have any discussion about whether it should be. And this, this board, or three of this board, did in fact do that. So I want to make it very clear that I have read that, and certainly the board was certainly able to move forward and to move forward without any public review, without any public meetings, without any public discussion, and this board did so decide. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Anything else that you think we should know as our subcommittee moves forward, Brian, with, with this process?
Not at the present time, no. And if the subcommittee were to have any questions, we could certainly answer them as, you know, as they come about.
Okay. All right, subcommittee, it's in your hands. Brian, we appreciate you coming and just clarifying the process.
Thank you for having me. Happy holidays.
You too. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to some public hearings. We have a couple, we have three of them tonight. Our first one, we finally get to get this done, I believe, is our transfer of liquor license for Taste of Wine and Spirits. This is a hearing that we have had open since November 16th. And I believe we, hi Jim. Welcome.
You're real.
I didn't even see you walk in yet. Have you not met him in person?
Never before.
I've, I've, you've hung out with him for so many years.
Jim Lamke, our other attorney. We get some good in-person attorney sightings tonight.
Good luck to bring your bookcase with you.
It's those weird meetings now where we have people that have never met in person but have been working on Zoom for years together.
It's a shock. My apologies to everybody.
Welcome, Jim.
Well, it's good to be here. Good to see all of you.
Likewise, likewise. Okay, so for this first license, I know this has been continued a couple times, Jim, based on getting paperwork in hand and it sounds like we do have this in hand?
Yes. Yes, I've, I've been working, uh, with Jen Oram, uh, on this. This hearing, as, as you've noted, has been continued a few times.
Yep.
Apparently now all the pieces are put together and the application is ready to be, uh, reviewed by the board and acted on by the board.
Okay.
I don't know if the applicant, uh, is here.
Welcome. Come on, do you want to come on up to the table? It's, it's better acoustics.
Uh, would you like the manager of, um, records to?
Yeah, both of you come on up. You can get an extra chair if we need.
Thank you for, uh.
Thank you for, I know this has been a long time coming. We've been trying to get this done for you also.
I've got a couple of things, uh, lined up, but I appreciate your work on this.
Great, and just introduce yourselves for the town?
Sure, uh, my name is Christopher LeBlanc.
And I am Renee McDonald.
Great. Okay. Jim, what were you saying?
So, uh, it would normally be appropriate for the applicant to explain their background, what they intend to do here. Uh, and the board can ask certainly any questions that they may have, uh, a chance to give some background on you and also to, uh, hopefully if the approval goes through to promote your business, so.
Sure. Zach, uh, yeah, I could definitely do that. Um, so as I said, my name's Chris. Um, we, uh, we're from Wine and Spirits Depot in Pembroke. We currently have a store already operating there as well as West Corner Liquors and Hall. Uh, we have a similar situation to the store that we're looking to get into in Cohasset, um, in Pembroke, where we're in a, uh, Stop and Shop Plaza. So we're directly next to Stop and Shop. Um, so we've been there for about 13 years. Um, and we're very familiar with, you know, that type of scenario with high traffic, high foot traffic and, uh, you know, groups of people and this and that. Um, so, uh, my partner, Robert,'s been in the industry for about 25 years. Um, he's been through a couple of different stores, uh, West Corner, had for, I want to say about 20 years. Um, so we're excited to, to get into this new location. We've been kind of looking for a little while for the right scenario. Um, and this one, uh, kind of makes all, hits all the, the checkmarks for us. Uh, myself personally, um, I've been with the store for about, almost the whole time, 13 years. Um, I was a mechanic by trade before that, but, uh, decided to get out and I've been doing this ever since. Inside and out of the elements is great. Uh, but I love what I do, uh, very much so. And, um, you know, we like to think that we're going to do, uh, a good job in, in Cohasset. Um, you know, we really like to promote having a good atmosphere for people to work in. We take very good care of our employees. Um, as well as, you know, make sure that we're doing our job very diligently and checking IDs and doing our, you know, taking care of our responsibilities. Um, you know, like I said, we've taken very good care of our employees. As is evident, we did not lose a single one over the whole entire span of COVID, which is very impressive.
They all started. That's amazing.
Um, so, yeah, it was helping. It was very, uh, for sure. But, you know, just, I mentioned that just to give you an idea of what kind of store we like to promote and the type of people that we like to bring in. Um, I would certainly let Renee, uh, say a word. She's been with us for, I don't know.
Hi Renee.
Hi, I've been, Chris is assistant manager, I think, four years.
That's fine, I've been with you since six.
Five, but I've been with you since six.
Okay.
It's just been a great adventure, learning experience. Just learning like the X and Ls, how to buy your product and know what you need when you need it. But it's just, it's been a great, great one. And I'm excited to move forward and have, um, another opportunity to come to the town.
Quick question from me in terms of timeline, when are you hoping to open?
Yeah, so, um, you know, originally we were hoping to get in there for the holidays, but, uh, not quite so much. So at this point, we're kind of looking at end of January, beginning of February, hopefully.
Okay.
Um, you know, so, uh, we're going to do it soon, sure.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Just, just clarification that this, um, your business is Wine and Spirits Depot?
Yep.
We call that and you're moving into a Taste of Wine and Spirits.
Correct.
Across from Stop and Shop on 3A.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so we're transferring that way?
Yep.
Correct. Yep, so we, the, the store in Pembroke is a Wine and Spirits Depot and we are, uh, making it a second Wine and Spirits Depot.
Okay. Other questions? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the license of, or the transfer of a Taste of Wine Spirits transferring to Liquid Beverage Depot. It, uh, doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot.
We're beverage during business as Wine Spirits.
Yeah. Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this transfer signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations and welcome to the town. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much. Just for record, uh, you probably should also vote to approve, uh, Renee as the manager.
Ah, yes. Okay. Good call, Jim. That's why we passed.
Uh, I'll move, we, we move, um, the proposed manager of, um, Renee McDonald of Marchville, Mass.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of appointing Renee's manager signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, now congratulations. You looked nervous for a second, Renee. She got nervous.
We're tired.
So I believe we need to close this hearing now, correct? Cause it's been open for a few meetings now.
So I would move that we close the, uh, public hearing and transfer of liquor license to Taste of Wine and Spirits.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. 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 Okay. All right, that hearing is closed. Wonderful. Thank you both so much. We're excited for the opening. Let us know when the official opening date is.
Also, thanks to Bruce, um, for his good work.
Yes. Amen to that, yes. Okay, the next hearing is with Nine Depot Inc. Doing Business as The Orm for Nine Depot Court. Hi, welcome. Come on up to the table. Do we need another chair? No, pull one over if you want. It's fun to be in person, I know. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you very much.
I know. So Jim, you can open with info about this and then we can have everyone introduce themselves. Actually, wait, do we need to open the hearing?
We should open the hearing.
Okay. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So move it.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, this hearing is officially open. A lot of opening and closing of hearings tonight. All right, Jim?
Uh, this is a, a hearing for a new license for, uh, Nine Depot, uh, Inc. It used to be the, uh, Mr. Dooley's Place. Uh, would be appropriate for the board to, uh, hear from the applicant and the applicant is, uh, represented by Luke Cassis, uh, very skilled attorney and liquor licensing.
Love that you're complimenting each other. I love that.
I think 35 years or so.
Wow. Okay. All right, fabulous.
On the opposite side of things.
Point of order. Could we just read the hearing notice?
Oh.
I think that would just help serve the community a little bit better.
You are right. Go ahead, Diane, you have it out. You're right.
The voting were open, but I just, for clarification's sake, the Cohasset Select Board acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 at 7:00. 5:00 PM, Wilkett Commons, 91 Sawyer Street, Cohasset Pass. Consider the application of Nine Depot Inc., DVA, The Orm located at Nine Depot Court, Cohasset Pass. The application is for a new, uh, Section 12 on premises restaurant, all alcohol license that the licensed premises will comprise approximately 1,600 plus minus square feet, plus three dozen named storage cage spaces in the basement, plus the brick patio area in front of 13 Depot Court and the side of Nine Depot Court, all of which are surrounded by common areas and accessways as well as an eight by eight footprint of a new walk-in cooler plus in cooler. The proposed manager is Tracy E. Vaughn. As meeting details, including converting to a remote meeting may be changed. The public is urged to check regularly at the town meeting's calendar and the Town Manager Board for any updates. Public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing jorham@cohassetmass.org for in-person half the hearing.
Thank you, Diane. I love having Diane's institutional memory to remind us of things when I forget them. Okay. We're in business now.
Yes, it's a good thing. It's Tracy Vaughn, Richard Vaughn, uh, the applicants for the license, the corporation, which is the, they're both the officers and shareholders of the corporation. Tracy will be the manager. Mr. Lampke pointed out, this license was formerly the Mr. Dooley's, old Irish pub, I think, and it was and closed, I think, since St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
And hopefully we're going to reopen again. And, uh, this, this couple has two other restaurants. Uh, The Jetty in Rochfield, both for about seven years. The Flats in Danza's, which is the old Bridgman's, that's both for two or three years. And, um, they have an excellent reputation in both communities, uh, and no violations in either community of all time they've been there. And we'll let Tracy tell you a little bit about the decor and the, uh, the menu, what you all offer.
Great. Hi, Tracy.
Hi, good to meet you all. Thank you for having me. Um, so we're looking to do something that if, if you're familiar at all with The Jetty or The Flats, won't be all that much of a departure. Probably closer to the Flats in terms of, you know, feel and menu style. Um, it will be casual, American, craft cocktails. Um, The Orm in terms of decor will be consistent with its name. So as you might imagine, sort of a, a nautical and, uh, we just felt, you know, giving a nod to the, the coastal and nautical history of the town was important. We try, have tried to do that with both of our other locations. Um, but again, just sort of warm welcoming, your neighborhood place, the casual American menu, you know, if you think of a burger, you know, some really good creative sandwiches. We will definitely have entrees, salads, soups. But what we're really looking to do is kind of fill the gap. Um, so, you know, sort of complement what's already in the village and offer something that's sort of, you know, sort of in the middle, I guess you would say, between the empty stroll and letting it slide away.
All right. And again, this, we've been really working hard on economic revitalization for the village, especially we care about all of our businesses in town, but the village has been a real focus and especially at Stroll this past weekend, it was really sad seeing that spot dark during stroll.
We attended the stroll and we were excited to see like just the.
All the turnout.
I don't see, it was great.
I will say I'm a big fan of both The Flats and The Jetty and I'm really excited that it's you and when I heard it was you, it's, it's great food that you have at the other restaurants. So I hope you have the cheese filled pretzel. That you do with the flat. Like, could we add that in today? Could we add that in as a?
Five dollar burger on the table.
Yeah, yeah. We all have food requests. But seriously, thank you for being there. It's a very important location for the town and it's been really sad seeing it empty through COVID. Other questions from the board? Okay, any other comments? Yeah, oh, Jean, go ahead.
When did you say you were planning on ending the whole thing by the end of the year?
Same time.
We don't want to take the test drive and say Patrick's Day.
Yeah, that's true.
A little bit fire to that, if possible.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Jim?
Nope. Uh, Jen Oram, as usual, has gone through all the paperwork and organized it and checked it and I've been beautiful with her and everything seems to be in order.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Oram. She did, she's very helpful today.
She's great. Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the application of Nine Depot Inc. Doing Business as The Orm at 8 Vigo Court for a Section 12 on premises restaurant, all alcohol license.
Just correction, it's Nine Depot Court?
Yeah.
Oh, a Nine Depot Court.
Party from else's restaurant.
That's, yeah, all right. Thank you, Jean. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
If you want, you could include in that.
The manager. All right, Jean, would you like to amend the motion?
I would amend the motion to, um, include Tracy Vaughn.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, congratulations and welcome. We are so excited to have you.
Thank you so much. Have a great holiday.
Keep us updated now we can.
We're all supposed to be doing the contract this week.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Diane, if you, I, I just don't have the public hearing notice out, but I thought, so if you're willing to read this one, I, or I'll give it to me and I'll read it. All right. Hold on, we, we need to close that hearing. All right.
We close the hearing for Nine Depot Court.
Do you have a second? Second, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that hearing is closed. Our last hearing for tonight.
I've got the wording.
All right, I'll just, this is for The Barrel at Cohasset, doing business as The Barrel for 50 South Main Street. Cory, if you have this up, please read it for us.
Yep, this is a public hearing notice. The Cohasset Select Board acting as the liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 at approximately 7:15 PM at Wilkett Commons at 91 Sawyer Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts. Consider the application of The Barrel at Cohasset LLC, which has been doing business as The Barrel located at 50 South Main Street, Cohasset. The application is for a new wine and malt package store license. The licensed premises will comprise of a single floor and is 2,418 square feet with one entrance and one exit. The proposed manager is Mary Ellen McGlocklin. As meeting details, including converting to a remote meeting may be changed, the public is urged to check regularly at the town's website, CohassetMA.org in the calendar section for any updates on meeting changes. Application materials on this are available at the planning board office. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing by email, emailing jorham@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. With that, I move to open this hearing.
All right, we have a motion to open the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Jim T. Assau.
Yes, uh, thank you. And, uh, I would suggest we turn it over to, uh, Richard Henderson, who represents the applicant, who's no doubt known to the.
Yes, hi, Richard. I really love your mask and matching tie outfit.
My wife actually bought this and I'm glad that you realize what it's.
Very festive.
I, I am Richard Henderson. I represent McGlocklin's. Mary Ellen to my left and you to my further left. Um, Mary Ellen is the principal of The Barrel Cohasset LLC, which is a Massachusetts reliability company. Mrs. McGlocklin is a Massachusetts resident and a U.S. citizen, so she meets all standards of statute. Um, what they're planning is a country general store where the old Tedeskes used to be, only selling normal general store grocery products and hopefully beer and wine is part of their product line. Um, Mary Ellen has been the manager of The Barrel in, in, on Major South Main Street. So she has five years' experience doing what she's going to do in Cohasset, including having the beer and wine license. Um, they, her place is operating without any violations, a problem for five years. Um, all of her employees are tips, all employees who handle alcohol are tips trained and all employees who will work here will be similarly trained. Um, and with respect to location, she has a long-term lease at Tedeskes at 50 South Main Street. And, uh, in terms of the area where we want to use the license, I think it's probably convenient to the public as required by statute. There's only one other beer and wine store within the village and, uh, I was thinking about that today. I remember a time when there were four all alcoholic beverages kind of stores within, it's about a quarter of a mile. Ralph's, Hall and Harrison's Pharmacy, the Central Market, Dick Scott's, another store, and the store in the harbor. So I think there's a need for it. So I think in all respects, you may follow criteria of statute, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about the plans for the business.
Wonderful. And do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, uh, Hugh McGlocklin.
Hi. Okay.
Well, I have to say one thing right off the bat.
Go ahead.
What am I going to do with all the time that I don't have to spend answering questions from people in Cohasset? That's the, when somebody's, will we get into that?
That's a fair point.
So you have our profound gratitude.
It's another spot that's been open for a while that has been sad to look at. So again, just in terms of the village plans and revitalizing it, it's nice to see some action happening in these locations. Cory?
Yeah, so just a quick question for you. So the store's about 2,400 square feet. Can you use an estimate about kind of what your split's going to be between, you know, non-alcohol and alcohol? I mean, sometimes I think the village does, you know, Tedeskes did offer, you know, just kind of basic needs and stuff like that. So I do think there's a need in town to have, um, a combination store here. So could you just give us a little bit of a sensation about what you're looking for the split, just so we can, you know, kind of have in our heads what to expect?
Sure. I mean, um, there's going to be beer and wine and also shakurri, you know, with, with, there's also going to be a pretty substantial, um, pie deli. Um, for almond sandwich and also cold cut, but then also market items like, um, milk, eggs, bread, and then, um, a little candy section for the kids coming.
Love that.
Yeah, and then, um, no things for like after schools and slushies and coffee and all those. So the liquor license is a big part of it, but at the same time, we have the main focus. The main focus is what we do to achieve, like, for all ages.
Okay. Diane?
Just, um, is the deli sort of made to order sandwiches?
Oh, oh, right.
Really poor question. I love that.
I'm going to scan if there are, uh, deli pre-made, uh, pre-made meals?
Well, the pre-made sandwiches are like, it is a deli, made to order.
Glad you're clarifying the.
And like contact too. And then just one other question, just because, um, spacing out, what is there, what is within the village where it's carry out alcohol, beer and wine?
Currently just anchored sale, but.
Right, when they turn in their licenses.
Right.
This, this would be the only.
So this would be the only.
Yep.
Which again, it, people that are downtown that don't want, don't have time to run the 3A, want to be able to get eggs and wine or milk in the sandwich. I mean, it's just, it's a great idea and I think it's going to do really well.
If I had an approximate percentage of the gentleman's question, I'd say 20, 25% would probably be the beer, wine, all in, from the rest of the facility.
Okay.
It's a pack, but it's not, it's not it.
Yeah, a little bit of for every one. That's right. Thank you.
It's like craft beer.
Yeah.
And just remind for everyone to know what are the hours you're thinking about dur- during the week and.
Sure, probably, um, similarly, seven. Sure. Probably, um, similarly, seven, seven, seven days a week.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Just some clarification in the, um, in, in the packet. Um, the, 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 uh, police chief notes that the address is actually fifty-two?
It's kind of like confusing about that.
So is that still
Yeah, it's funny just
Oh, that's weird.
Yeah, it's bounce back and forth.
The title were all says thirty to fifty from the back to the store. So I'm not sure.
So Jim, what would you recommend?
The lease under the week says fifty. So I, I would go
Five, zero, so.
All right. And we have fifty on our agenda.
And it's, it's funny, I actually do remember that address confusion that we had with some other business in town fairly recently, maybe in the past couple of years. So, um, we can correct that.
Yeah.
Correction at some point. But we're talking about, was that during sale? You're right. Um, but we are talking about the building right to Tedeskes.
Right. Which we can clarify in the motion in case there's any confusion. All right. If there's no other questions, we can entertain a motion.
Uh, just when do you expect to be, uh, opening?
Shooting for April, April.
Right.
Start construction sometime in January.
So we might have three places opening in the village in the spring.
Maybe four.
Yeah, maybe four. Maybe four. You're right. All right. Any other clarifications? Counsel, you're both, okay. All right. And we can also loop in the both parts of the motion like we did for the last two.
I'll, I'll drop at the motion. Uh, to, um, to approve an application for section fifteen wine and malt package store license for The Barrel at Cohasset LLC, DBA The Barrel, located at Fifty South Main Street, Cohasset, Mass. And that proposed manager, um, is and will be Mary Ellen McLaughlin.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of this approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Adamus, thank you so much. We're really excited. Again, let us know when the opening is so we can plug it to the town.
Have a soft one. Make sure you guys get special one.
Awesome. Diane's coming for the session. I'll, I'll be with her.
We should, we should wrap it. Pickle policy.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. We need to close the hearing, I believe. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Jim, thank you. It was a productive night. It's nice to see you in person.
See you at B M M A in January.
She will?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll be there one of those days. Okay. Moving on to our master plan implementation committee. Hi, everyone. Would you like to join us up at the table? Yes. You're all welcome.
Elm Street.
Well, we're starting with Elm Street, but I'm just saying anyone who's part of this who wants to come on up. Hi, Lauren.
Hi, hello.
Okay. I was inviting you to come over, so, no. Hi, all right. That's fine. That's fine.
Hello.
Timmy can come. Okay. You're just moving to the front row. Okay.
The one nice thing about, the one, this, this oddity, right, with now we're in person, so we have masks.
So we also have to talk
See Jim all the time. I can recognize him.
Oh, yeah.
Again, sorry to the public. It's a little weird trying to bring people up in the back and talk to them and get them up here just for volume reasons. We're trying to have acoustics so everyone can hear. All right. I think we need to start with our Elm Street Corridor Working Group Phase One update. Hold on. Think we're just checking on some slides? I T work. Okay. No, hang on. For your patience. No problem. That's today. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
I think the audience, the audience behind the screen, so we like flip this and that.
I thought about that. Yeah. Hi, both of you.
Sorry for the delay on that.
No problem. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
I know that Elm Street's been something we've been working on for a while and there's a lot going on, so we're excited to hear the update.
Absolutely. And so for the behalf of the community and everyone watching, I'll do a little summary.
Perfect.
So my name is Lauren Lind and I'm the Corridor Planning Director and I'm joined here tonight by our consultant, Jim Riordan of Weston and Sampson. He's been our lead project, uh, consultant, uh, team member throughout this whole process. So what we're here to talk about today is the report out of what we've been calling Phase One of the Elm Street Corridor Initiative. This project was a project that was identified as a priority goal in both the master plan and the harbor plan with goals of creating a better connection between the harbor and the village. So, uh, back in August of twenty twenty, actually, the Select Board voted to charge a working group under the Master Plan Implementation Committee, known as the Elm Street Corridor Working Group, to begin to work on Phase One. That would involve public engagement, working with stakeholders, and trying to narrow out what could be potential conceptual designs for a re-envisioned Elm Street. We, um, throughout a, a public process that Jim will get into more detail and, and, uh, detail you on, we had, we went out with mailings, we heard from residents, we conducted a series of public forums and had, uh, some public survey input. So we got a lot of feedback and we started, started to work through some different options that we might consider for a re-envisioned Elm Street. These included different options for both the, um, the intersections on the end of the corridor as well as the section, the middle section of Elm Street and the residential portion. Based on feedback, the group then narrowed out what is recommended as the recommended layout that we'll go over tonight. We had a public forum on November eighteenth. Actually, it had been postponed from October. We had that in our Easter. And we held the, uh, that public forum, which was the third, and we presented what the group had recommended as their design. We got a lot of great feedback. We do know that as we move into a Phase Two, which we'll get into more detail a bit later on in the meeting about, that there's a lot more fine tuning that needs to happen as we move towards a more detailed design level plan for this corridor. But right now we have, uh, some great feedback. It seems like there is a consensus that the reconfiguration of the intersection at the harbor end should happen. The fine tuning of how that happens, we need to have some more engagement. As we've heard, members of the public have differing opinions of what's been proposed, but we know that there's some fine tuning to do there. Same goes for the residential portion, but we are looking towards improved pedestrian, uh, facilities and also some, some traffic calming measures. Some of the main feedback points that we heard throughout this public input process was safety and, um, you know, concern about pedestrian access and safety, you know, crosswalks and facilities of that nature. And then, um, would that be the, uh, the final intersection after some weighing back and forth of different options, it really came to be that just some pedestrian improvements and streetscape improvements are best there. There had been some talk about potential reconfiguration, which led to some concentrated stakeholder discussion in the village. And something that we heard, uh, really loud and clear was that there's a parking problem in the whole village and that what we were looking to do
Just a little. Just a little.
Um, you know, we, what we were looking to do there, it really sort of made more problems than it solved. So what we've understood is, uh, feedback from that point is that knowing that we're going to be working on village revitalization in the coming months, that's been another goal this, the board has identified and that, uh, parking is definitely a factor that we need to begin to look at. So we're not setting that aside. We're just, uh, removing that from the conversation of trying to reconfigure that portion of the Elm Street corridor. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Riordan to walk through a presentation that goes through more detail about what Phase One entailed and what the recommended concept was that the group came to consensus on based on all this feedback. And then we'll talk a bit about next steps and open it to any questions that you might have.
Great. Hi, Jim. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We're excited to hear this.
Well, thank you so much for having us here this evening. Thank you very much for having me here. Um, and thank you, Lauren, for the really great introduction. So, um, uh, with that, if we could put up the presentation that it's um, uh, while, while we're waiting, I guess. Um, so of course, we've been working on this for, for a couple of months at this point. Um, and let's see if we can just go to the next slide. Perfect. So key topics that we want to go over include, uh, the engagement process that we use with the public. Um, did really a fair amount of engagement upfront here, uh, which I think will help going forward because, you know, a lot of the ideas have been pretty well flushed out with, uh, with, you know, folks in the public and stakeholder groups that we worked with. Uh, data evaluation, uh, concepts. So these are the con- conceptual designs that Lauren alluded to a couple of minutes ago. We have it split up into three parts. Uh, that includes the village, sort of the middle section, the harbor area. We'll go over those. And then, uh, budget and next steps. So, you know, what do we do going forward and how do we get there? Um, next slide please. Okay. First off, I, you know, I'd like to, I think it's important that we point out who's on the working group. So there was the Elm Street Corridor Working Group or E S C W G, uh, for short. Uh, and that included, uh, Jason Federico from the Department of Public Works, of course, Lauren, uh, Chief Robert Sylvia Clark Brewer, uh, from the Planning Board, Tim Davis from the Harbor Committee, Mike Sardina, uh, Citizen at Large, also here this evening, uh, and Diane Kennedy, of course, from the Select Board. Uh, next slide please. So, uh, a few words about the status of where we are. So, um, as I mentioned, it was a pretty extensive, uh, engagement process. Uh, it included three public meetings. It included, uh, two surveys that were done, public surveys. So one at the beginning of the process. And as we got into it a little bit, it seemed to, it seemed to make sense to go back and get some more input from the public in sort of a structured way, I guess. So we did a second survey and, um, uh, and then in addition to that, of course, the work with the, uh, the, uh, C W G. The working group was really instrumental. We met with them, I think, pretty much monthly, um, to, uh, you know, get to where we are today. Um, is the sort of technical part of this project included data gathering, figuring out what's going on in, in existing conditions in the corridor and the study area. And, uh, then following that up, of course, with technical design. Uh, next slide please. So the engagement process, already alluded to this. So it included, uh, the E S W G, it included, uh, the public surveys, the two public surveys that I mentioned, and, uh, the three public meetings. So there was one public meeting that was held early on in the process. I think it was April, April and May. Uh, there was another one, uh, in sort of like the June timeframe, and then we had a third one more recently, as Lauren was mentioning. Um, next slide please. So existing conditions. So I, I don't think that any of this will be a big surprise to, to folks. Uh, folks who live in the town, folks who, uh, frequent the area, of course, yourselves. So pedestrian conditions are, we would call it fair to avoid. There's a lot of disconnection in sidewalks. Um, there's cracks in the pavement. Uh, there's really kind of poor delineation between where the walkway is and where the travel way is in a lot of cases. Um, in many cases, there's just no sidewalks whatsoever. Um, and so it makes it difficult to know how to, how to walk through the area. It also makes it extremely difficult for folks with disabilities. Um, wide roads. So I, I think you mentioned, uh, the, uh, the, you know, the sort of speedway that this presents. Um, so the width of the roads makes people psychologically, you know, they can see forward, they can see how, you know, a quarter of a mile down the road, it makes them want to go fast, um, just kind of the way people work. There's not very much space for trucks, um, particularly in the village area. So you can see in that top picture on the left, uh, truck parked, um, I think that's Brook Street. Uh, and how much of the road it, it occupies and how difficult that you can imagine it would be to load and offload, uh, load up and offload for the truck. Um, there is a lack of clear signage, both for how to travel through the area and where to park and how to go around parking. Uh, there are no delineated bike lanes whatsoever. Um, in many cases, it's really difficult if you were on a bike to figure out how you would get through the area safely. And then it's difficult for emergency vehicles also because they, they really can't turn from Brook on to Main Street, so they have to go down the summer. Um, next slide please. So, um, these are, as, and as I mentioned, they're split up into three parts. These are the concepts that we came up with largely, um, through, uh, the, uh, the working group. But of course with input from the general public. So we took all that information from the surveys, we took the information from the public meetings, we tried to listen closely and we worked closely with the working group who, you know, frankly have tried, you know, made efforts to try and improve this area before and get to consensus on that. And so they know, they know where the bodies are buried, right? So, uh, this is the concept for the village area. As Lauren was mentioning, uh, you know, it doesn't present a lot of structural change to the area. Um, and that was really, you know, we had had a couple of options that presented more change in the area and folks really didn't want to change it that much. Mainly, they wanted to add more parking, uh, clearer pedestrian access and safer pedestrian access. So that's what this one represents. Next slide please. Uh, in the midsection, so also not a huge amount of structural change here, really just kind of a redelineation of where the sidewalks are. Clear parking on one side of the street, so on the south side, um, sharrows for bike lanes. Folks wanted to be able to take their bikes through there safely, but they didn't want, um, uh, designated bike lanes that are just for bikes. And frankly, it was just going to occupy too much space. The, um, the section of the road, the road section just won't support that. Um, so, uh, this is throughout the midsection, of course. This is kind of a typical, if you will. So there'll be areas where, you know, as we get into more thorough design, this would vary a little bit, but this will be pretty much consistently maintained. Sure.
Just one point that I want to make for, I think is noteworthy. If you see on the back, you can see the line above, sort of on the top of the screen, the proposed grass, existing right of way. You'll see on the bottom side, again, existing right of way really does come pretty far in.
Yeah.
And so that was important to the working group that we set early on is that while the town does own significantly farther into the right of way than one might ever imagine, particularly sensitive to the fact that there was already a taking on Elm Street some time ago, we were adamant that we did not want to encroach any further, even though the town owns that land. So that we really tried to pay attention to make sure that this configuration would fit within existing back of sidewalk to existing back of sidewalk.
And this actually, this actually narrows it up slightly, one or two feet. So a little bit, little bit tighter than, than it is currently. When, one of the things that, that we also did when we were, when we were looking through this was think about where telephone poles are in utilities and stuff like that. Try and work with that so that those things aren't in the middle of the sidewalks. Um, this is the harbor area and this is the most significant reconfiguration. So I'm sure you can tell. So the idea here was that the sort of northernmost intersection, uh, between Margarine and, and, uh, Elm Street Cove, that that get reconfigured in a way that it was clear how to travel through the area, that it was safe, that people would understand they're supposed to stop when they're driving their cars. It's a nice thing, right? That it was easier for pedestrians to walk through the area, uh, that there were clear places to park and that it was relatively easy to park. Um, and, uh, to try and improve the safety in the, uh, the southern intersection too, um, to, uh, you know, the, the way that was set up before was really difficult to cross the street in that area. So this is intended to try and fix a lot of that. I don't know if, Lauren, if you had anything you wanted to say.
Sure. Just, just, I think the, the area down by the VFW is what Jim was just referencing and we've heard a lot about that crosswalk danger it is. And this is really intended to try to make that area safer. And I think it's also great because it adds to dedicated and accessible.
Right.
Have spaces right in front of that area there as well, which I think is an added benefit.
That's great. Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that part.
Uh, next slide please. All right. So next steps in budget. So, um, this, you know, uh, next steps going forward, probably do it in two phases. This is focused on the design work. So I guess kind of three phases, if you will. So there's the two steps in design and, uh, and permitting, and then there's the construction thing. Um, and the first step in design, we call this like a budget level design. Um, so getting ready for permitting at this point. The thing that we have proposed to do next is the first line item in that middle column there, the budget level design to, to about fifty percent. Uh, following that would be a permitting level of design. So that'll take you to a level of design where you could turn it into permit agencies, to the extent that permitting is necessary out here. Permitting itself would follow that. Um, some additional public engagement. So we've set aside, um, budget for that and that'll occur throughout the process. So, you know, these first three items are sequential. The bottom one kind of spreads out across the other three. Uh, and then final design. And we would recommend, um, because the town has a construction contractor on contract, you have them on call, to work with them sort of letting the design build kind of approach to this. So as opposed to going design, bid, and then build, what you do is you get to a near complete design and you work with them on the details of exactly how you go about implementing that design and you finalize the design in conjunction with contractor. Um, it's more efficient of time. It's usually a little less expensive. It's more efficient of time, it's usually a little less expensive, and so since you have that relationship with contractors, it seems like the perfect way to go.
Well, we did discuss that with Department of Public Works staff, would be a part of that process as well.
Next slide please. So we anticipate that the whole cost of design and construction would be about $4.5 to $5.5 million. And that would implement the design as it was proposed essentially.
Okay. All right.
And that's essentially it.
Thank you. That was a really helpful presentation, and I think it helped clarify a few questions that I had. What other questions does the board have? I know that was a lot of good information, very quickly. Corey, then Diane.
Okay. So, you know, one thing that I'm sure the board, we've got a lot of emails from, and this seems to address it, is the intersection of Elm Street and Elm Court being a bus stop, and the speed issue, I know that there's, that's a real issue that families are experiencing, and obviously, you know, safety of the kids is paramount to really kind of anything else we do. So I think this goes a long way, too, and that's two questions I have. You mentioned during the presentation that the issue of emergency vehicles going down Brook Street, and they'd have to go to Summer Street, but this doesn't seem to really get too much to that intersection. Does this solve that problem, or is that just an existing problem that is going to exist after this?
That early, so one of our earlier alternatives would have helped with that. This particular, because the village is getting, it's very soon, you know, because the village area isn't getting structurally changed, but it doesn't really change that.
All right, and the second question is, so on the north side, yeah, it seems like you're six-foot sidewalks, and the south side was eight-foot sidewalks. Can you just tell me a little bit about, you know, I mean, is eight feet, I don't know essentially what a normal sidewalk is, I guess, so is eight feet like super wide, or is six feet more normal? Because I'm just wondering if, you know, there's some opportunity to maybe have some more green space, or if this really is nice to have a little bit extra space.
I'll address that first, just so you know, because that's been a topic, that's a big topic that's come up in feedback that we found in the community. We do anticipate at this point that in, while we get to the design phase, that the sidewalk that's proposed will actually be more of a mirror image, so it'll be six feet on each side. The intent in the eight-foot versus six-foot sidewalk at the time, in the working group discussions, was that you have this sort of hierarchy of one would be a larger area, you know, that had been sort of a turnout of, previously, we looked at a shared use path, which is a wider lane, which bicycles are, you know, able to travel in along with pedestrians. But we heard very distantly from the community that they did not want a shared use path. So that was the sort of the common ground that was proposed by the working group. We've since heard that that needs some more fine tweaking, so we will anticipate that sort of dimension of the eight-foot sidewalk will be narrowed a bit more, but will still be improved from what's existing today. And then the question about you had, the grass strip portion, we've heard mixed reviews right now about whether people want a grass strip or not, so those are kind of the really fine gray details that we anticipate into, like, what we talk about in Phase Two, particularly in terms of public engagement portion of Phase Two, is that in addition to the public forums, we have sort of these status updates in a large, you know, forum, we also want to do a better job of inviting people into our working group meetings where you can roll up your sleeves, and if you really want to have a conversation about the really mitigating details, you're welcome to have them, everything's open in the public. Those are typically not the things that people want to hear about at a forum, so, but that particular issue has been raised, and we know that there's more to come on that. I don't know if Jim had anything to add, besides that?
No, no, actually, you covered it perfectly. The thing I was going to point out was that eight feet allowed enough width so that, you know, if you have kids on bicycles and things like that, that they have some place to go, they don't have to be in the sheroes of the street.
That's right, got you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, it does seem like there are certain locations where the eight feet really can be beneficial, especially for those high-traffic areas for kids and bikes and that stuff. So I do see the appeal, yeah.
Well, and also, there's telephone poles on the sidewalks throughout, but before I ask my question, I just want to thank Jim and Lauren and the committee too, because we really have a lot of engagement, especially the neighbors, and of course, they are the ones that should be discussing very fine details on all of this, on curb cuts, on river sidewalks, on the grass strip. So it's been a great process, and like we were saying earlier, it only gets better, and we can do a better job of inviting the whole community, because it's a big ticket item too, ultimately. We're going to have to find, we have to fund it, sell the funding to the community at large, and not just the neighbors. So, but anyway, it's been great. One question I have, which is just a technical question that I probably shouldn't answer, but there's work there now, there's a lot of work with the water, and how is that going to get paved over, or is it, because this is obviously not happening in conjunction with what's going on right now for work?
Right, absolutely, that's a great question. And the reason that infrastructure work that had been planned, that was also a portion of why this project was prioritized when it was, so that we could dovetail, knowing that there was going to be pending infrastructure work. So what I would imagine to happen, and I don't have M I D W friends here, and it's a perfect detail, but what I would imagine is there would be some sort of a temporary binder course in the meantime, similar to how you've seen Sawyer Street, you know, that typically happens in a process anyway to allow settling of the material. So I would imagine it'd be a similar situation here in the meantime. There would be something as a temporary base to allow that to be paved before any sort of substantial construction was to happen.
Okay. Any more questions, Diane?
Jack over here, too.
No, okay. Jack, and then Jean.
Yeah, on the cost of this, can you give me kind of sources of use of the funds that are coming in? Where's all the money coming from? And then I have some questions about the infrastructure, and you're basically right near a proposed new underground parking garage, and presumably there'll be flooding issues with global sea rise, so there's a lot of things going around there, but first, I'm unclear of where the money, sources and uses of the money that's going to pay for this.
Sure, so I will take that gap. The first portion of Phase One was funded previously by this board through a reallocation of funds that had been mitigation payments from a development that was purposely put towards traffic improvement, so that's where Phase One came from. Phase Two, which you'll hear about a little bit more in your agenda in more detail, we're proposing using existing funds from Chapter 90 roadway budget, I believe, which, there's some other background.
We have that on the third part of this agenda.
Yes, that's the third part of the agenda. What we would anticipate is, we would like to apply for another community one-stop-for-bought grant for the second, or what we're calling out a third phase, to get us to construction permit level design. We do feel, and I did get good feedback from the state, that they really did like the project, but there is a couple more pieces, you know, so I think doing this will allow us to be more competitive in an upcoming grant round. And then in terms of the actual construction cost, that dog figure also, I want to let you know, was discussed with DPW, and that is in pretty much standard of what that sort of length of roadway would be to do this project, so that would go through the typical budget that would fund roadway and, you know...
And the state funds or town funds?
State or town funds, yes.
And where did the mitigation funds come from?
The mitigation funds from, that was used for Phase One, was the Beachwood development. There's a Toll Brothers that is, Toll Brothers estate. So, and then that's all that's been allocated right now. I will note, just so you're aware and transparently safe, that in the Cross Harbor Inn redevelopment site, the planning board did negotiate a $5,000 mitigation payment with the intent that at some point they knew there was going to be some sort of work done in the corridor, and given that proximity, that was the mitigation payment that was negotiated.
It's $5,000?
$5,000, yes. We don't have, that's not actually in town possession yet, because in terms of the conditions of that decision, it hasn't even triggered yet, but at some point, there will be $5,000, but it'll come, it will be put into the budget of the town and used at a town's discretion.
And as I recall, I'm trying to remember what the Beachwood mitigation funds were, I think it was, Katie might remember what that.
If I recall, hold on, yeah, we can recognize Katie Ugan from the audience.
So, Katie Ugan, one hundred block from Road. So the Toll Brothers gift originally was $75,000. There was a gift column also, too, in which it was essentially, she was a company of funds, was, I think, used for sidewalk segment near the Torrico Road, or it was used for broader transportation against the community. The fund balance went unfused, so it grew from $75,000 to $100,000, the $25,000 that was removed, essentially, principal interest on the original principal amount, and so $75,000 is now re-applying interest. I will tell you, having just spent a couple of meetings at that planning and communications committee, that's how we go sidewalk segments, that was gifted $75,000, when you actually cost that sidewalk segment out, will cost you $300,000. A part of the reason is that sidewalk segments have never gotten prioritized, like you mentioned. The gift does not need funding, and so it's been caught in government. I will tell you that I just spent an hour with a state rep talking about a connectivity plan and a funding plan that we'd like to get to, like, maybe haven't really played my deal with mine. But, that's your question, the balance?
Yeah, I just wanted the dollar amount of the, and the town of this five to six million dollars, how much is actually coming out of town taxpayer funds, as opposed, that's what I'm trying to find, is what is the town paying for this? What are the taxpayers?
We don't have that exactly yet. At this point, at this point, it's not been funded by taxpayer money, unless, I mean, other than the trickle-down effect that it would come from state funds, if you're right.
Assuming it's five million dollars.
So that, I don't have that answer yet, as to how that would be funded, the construction portion. I would need to confer with Department of Public Works as to how they typically fund the roadway budget.
Yeah, I just, the only reason I'm asking, people are wondering when we go on these projects, how much do we get from state funding and all of that, and how much the taxpayers are...
Yeah, I'm happy to include that figure as we move forward.
And it sounds like this other grant, too, could potentially offset that, so I think these balls are still in the air.
People want it, people want it.
Right, yes. Okay. Jean.
Well, thank you, Lauren, and thank you, Jim, for the presentation, appreciate it. So to follow on Selatan Shiten's comments, I think, and I saw this, I think in the open space meeting, that were we to redo all the sidewalks in town that need redoing, that's a total of 5 million, so I do think, and this is more of a comment, the board is going to be pressed to justify the expenditure of money here versus spreading it throughout the town for more universal upgrades. We know we have sidewalk issues everywhere, whether it's, you know, North Main Street, Sawyer Street, you know, we have road issues everywhere, so I think it's a fair question to press on the funding and what the opportunity cost of that is, which could be, for example, the town hall, or it could be sidewalks. And so I think we're, this is probably one of the most important issues to really land on, because we are moving into a zero-sum space for money. And looking at the plan, one of my concerns with the plan, which I honestly can't understand, is near the harbor, when we're taking out Hope Road, it looks like we're now creating a choke point for the fire engines, and there's no way that they could swing around under the proposed plan to head on to Atlantic, because there's just no room for them to corner in the way that they could now. And so I'd like to understand, at least from a safety issue, it just seems like we're creating a situation where the fire chief, the fire personnel are going to be forced to drive everything through the village over and over and over again, because they simply can't make it through the areas they currently can make it through, and, you know, fire access has been a huge issue for, so I would, next time we meet, we don't need to do it today, but I do think we need to really look at that, because I just, it's hard for me to understand the plan and why we're creating these choke points and creating additional time for fire access to reach parts of town going through. And I will tell you, if anyone, I know, I've seen some people outside witnessing this exact phenomenon, if you are downtown and a fire engine comes through, look out, everyone, because, and putting, driving more of that into the downtown area with all of that is a real concern.
Could you clarify, I don't quite follow. So from this map, it looks like they come down Elm Street, and that'd be a very, very shallow left, so I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is a choke point. Sorry, like, do we know that that is a choke point, though? Because I was thinking that, like, the cars could make it through.
The fire engine, the point, was the longest, biggest fire in the country.
So that was, that was actually one of the reasons why we had the chief vault.
Right, yeah, I just want to clarify, yeah, that we have the police chief, I mean, I'm sorry, car chief Sylvia on the roof, and he was confident that that design would allow safe and adequate travel for his engines, but that is something, as well, have analysis easily include in the next session, so that's easily something to address. In terms of the budget question, I hear your concerns, and I'm happy, like, as I mentioned to Mr. Creighton, to have more information about that for our next time that we are with you.
And on a related note of safety, I'm just wondering, how many speeding tickets have been actually issued on Elm Street? Because if a part of the whole reason we're spending all this money in this area is to reduce speeding, what's the speeding data look like?
I don't have that information, that's something that I can obtain, though.
And I think crash data, because when you look at the master plan, the crash data, which the resident pointed out to us, there's no crash date in the, the Hope Street right now, in terms of the configuration, it may, you know, it may not be like the most aesthetically beautiful thing on earth, but from a safety standpoint, the crash date doesn't seem to indicate that we have at that end of the harbor an issue. And so I think that's another consideration in terms of really looking at from a data standpoint. And then, I guess the third question that I would have, and this dovetails with feedback I've gotten from people who live on this street, is the survey responses don't seem to indicate that there's, for people who live on Elm Street, maybe the quiet support you would expect from the residents who live in that neighborhood. I think that's an issue that needs to be seriously considered and addressed, including before we move forward with additional large payments, because we, I just think we're going to have to be careful about if the neighborhood itself has really mixed views on it, we need to figure out, you know, an approach that works for the people who live there. So that's what I wanted to say, because people have come up to me, who literally live there and are going to be affected by this, and I think that has to be considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason why we took kind of a minimalist approach in that middle section. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and there was discussion about making, you know, more significant changes. And what was ultimately, what ultimately came out was something that was fairly minimalist.
I think it's in one near the harbor, I think.
Yeah, that's more so.
I think what we're sort of getting to is, why not pave an upgrade for a fraction of the cost versus everything that, a full redesign that is going to be very expensive for the town, given where we are right now, and I think that's the feedback that I'm seeking.
All right, and again, these discussions need to be continued, because this area is something that a lot of people in town have been wanting to work on for a while. I know people in the neighborhoods really care about being part of this, so I know you've done some forums already, but definitely the discussion has to continue. I see a hand from the audience, Katie Ugan.
Katie Ugan, one hundred block from Road. I just, it didn't come up in this presentation, I don't think it was recognized, the reconfiguration of the CHI project is actually happening on that intersection itself, so without the reconfiguration of that intersection, the new building basically must be sitting correctly where the roadway is sitting, without observing that green space. You're going to have quite a large structure right up to the roadway. So part of the reason for the reconfiguration was pressing CHI and some CHI projects is going to be impacting, they're moving their building towards the road, because they're creating open space around the harbor, but the end result, you're going to have a 45 plus foot structure directly out of roadway.
Yeah.
It's going to feel like a canyon, if you don't fill a little bit of green space.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, so my understanding is that part of this is driven by the needs of the CHI co-host at Harbor.
The reality is, they are moving their building structure to allow open space around the harbor, but as a result, where you see the harbor is today, it's going to be basically in the parking lot, sitting on edge of roads, because of the roadway, so that needed to be addressed as part of the reality of that Harbor project.
Yeah.
They have decided to, they're not moving it, they don't, there wasn't a building there, they, they want to, in order to have the green space, they maintain the size of the building that they choose to build.
Correct.
They want to put the building right next to the road, so the town has to then take part of the road and accommodate.
We don't have to, I think we're responding to, like, we don't have to, we can leave it how it is, which won't work. So I think that we're responding to what... So, I, I think that we're responding to what has been approved and what they're doing for, to, to keep, maintain that area as being best and most easily accessible for everyone. Yes, let's start, go, go ahead with that, Tim.
Tim Davis.
Okay, go ahead, Tim, go first.
And here's a, a member of the Elm Street Working Group, and also Chair of the Harbor. There are a couple of things to respond to, to your, your question. First of all, the, the design of Elm Street creates, with the work that is going on with the Cohasset Partnership Partners, is create a viewscape down Elm Street, which has been worked on by both Harbor Committee and Planning Board to create that viewscape, add in public access from Elm Street to the harbor, connecting to the Captain's Walk, which hopefully will eventually go all the way from the Oaks to, or the Oaks to Government Isle. The other thing to keep in mind is, when this is all being done, right now, we have a huge expanse of asphalt down this area for summer and water and all, 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 all the garden and park and all come together, huge expanse. One of the things this is doing, just one small example, is the Captain's Well, which some of you may know exists, but not many people in town really know that the Captain's Well exists, this will, this configuration will create an opportunity to really highlight the historic nature of the Captain's Well, and also tie into the Captain's Walk.
Thank you, and you're right, more people in town will know about it, when it's more easily accessible and more aesthetically pleasing. Exactly. All right, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a, a Woody Chip, 98, of Maine, just as a citizen. I've got a, a sense that there's a slight bias to the Captain's Well in West East, from the village down to the harbor, from the public safety offices down to the harbor. I think you've got to keep in mind that for at least three months of the year, in the summer, there are 100 to 110 children who go to the yacht club.
Yep.
There are four trips, nine o'clock, two, 12 o'clock back, up and down, and we're going to have a new, uh, lean start, right? And then at one o'clock, down again, and back at three, 3:30. The sailing club has an equal number, or if not greater, of children, so you're going to have a hot moment, so 200, 250 children on bicycles, four times a year.
Yeah, you're swashing now.
Going up there and there, and I just hope that, I, I'm not being critical of the plan, but, but I hope as you factor in traffic, you're thinking about, you know, 200 children plus, ages eight to 14. Um, yes, I'm sure they're, they're careful, but they're eight to 14, and, and whatever the term radii is or are, I just hope that, that there's some accommodation for younger children, that's all.
No, I think that's a good point, Juan.
It's not a, it's not a complaint, your criticism.
That's a good point, yeah, Diane.
No, and I, I, I just, to, to all of these points, I'm, this, this, again, there's, it boils down to communication sometimes, but this, this is one great thing about this committee and also working with Weston Sampson, is that there has been so much public input, the fact that the fire chief is at all, I mean, we talk all the time about moving the block by, so.
Yeah.
I love going to the yacht club, and that literally, there's, there's a discussion that doesn't take into consideration that, as well as, you know, the fire chief, but I think it was great to have him and a few subsequent people to talk about that, because we, you know, they have drawn those, those angles and circles and turning radii, so, again, it's, it's the beauty of the public process, it's the challenge as well. I know Lauren probably talks to every neighbor that has contacted each of us on a regular basis, and we really are trying to work together to come up with the best possible next steps forward, and it requires unfortunately a lot of time, money, and study to, to get us to a point to address all these considerations.
Yeah, and I, I agree, Diane, and one of the things we're seeing, we saw last night, is that people come out of the wood, and they'll say, they did, oh, but those are, I don't know how many hours I spent on the planning and zoning, you know, committees and, and all that, and we did a lot, and anybody was open, but a lot of people didn't see it, so, yes, we could say you should have been there, but in fact, they're citizens, they have other things to do, and, you know, we got to listen to them. And, you know, I'm starting to hear people who I never heard from before talking about various aspects of how their impact, and, and Woody's comment about the kids and the bicycles. I mean, the nice thing about Cohasset is, we really are a walking, bicycling community down around our harbor, we have all these things, like Sailing Club, the Yacht Club, the Rowing, and that's the focus of what makes Cohasset, and now they're coming out and they're having questions, and it is inconvenient to listen to the people, but we got to listen to them.
And I think where we are trying, but you're right, we have to, we have to keep doing better, but it just reminds me too, we, why this area is so important, I know Jean brought up, you know, of course there are other areas in town that need better sidewalks, that need some sidewalks, but so much good work is going on with our harbor, with our Harbor Committee and Harbor Plan, and with the village, and trying to revitalize the village, and we have to be focusing on Elm Street right now. There's just no way that we can do those two without Elm Street being part of it, because they're all intertwined, yeah.
Just, I just, I think these all have been excellent points, and I just want to reiterate that it's been a very ongoing discussion, and some of the points that you've made, safety, particularly thinking about children on bicycles, and Hannah saying, the destination that is Cohasset Harbor, and how to make that the best option. I think what we all have to remain cognizant of is that there's never going to be a perfect one-size-fits-all approach when you're thinking about these type of improvements and change, so what we're trying to do is just to make the, you know, the majority and the best option possible based on the consensus and feedback that we're getting.
And I think we agree with you.
Thank you, yes, absolutely, and, and we're fully prepared to have, as I mentioned, a lot more public engagement, that is actually something I requested particularly in phase two, is to have more time for public engagement, working group sessions, because it really is critically important to have the community input, so.
And neighbors especially involved, making sure we hear their feedback, yeah. Jean?
One thing, and Tim Davis, I give you a follow-up email on this, is flood mitigation from the harbor. Hingham did the harbor study, and they assessed the cost of increasing the sea wall, and when they went through all of that, they, they quickly realized, or it took actually a long time, when they went through all of the intense engineering, they came to the conclusion that for the cost, flood mitigation and redirection was potentially more important, and when you look at, for example, websites like searching seas, and when you plug in these neighborhoods on Elm Street, all the way down to Brook Street, you see the flood potential, and so I think, in my mind, if there's one main differentiator of the Elm Street border, it's going to be trying to protect the neighborhoods from foreseeable floodwaters, and so I don't think it needs to be now, but I think I would be very interested in hearing more about.
Lauren and Tim.
All quickly, and I know Tim's going to have more to add to this, we actually have information that we did through a grant program we instituted a couple of years ago, that storm type mapping pathways, that we have data that we do know, and we have more work going on with our Harbor Committee and volunteer groups assessing that information right now, and something that I will note, and that is a benefit of climate change and sort of the resiliency aspect of this, is that it is another aspect that you can use grant money for, and particularly as we look for a one-stop grant tying in, in addition to all, you know, hitting all the notes that these grant opportunities look at, job creation, housing creation, things like that, they also, resiliency is a big piece that makes your projects more competitive, and that is something that we can look to incorporate into our, our designs moving forward.
Okay, Tim?
We actually kicked off today, the, the first meeting.
Exciting.
The Cohasset Harbor Resiliency Program.
Great.
Sponsored by the Harbor Committee and CHIP, the Cohasset Harbor Infrastructure Planning Working Group. But we had a very good meeting, and what we're doing is coordinating the interests of all of the Cohasset community in this issue of climate change, sea wall rise, resiliency as storm surge, and, uh, this, we had a very good meeting. There are going to be a series of public forums to bring the public in and bring all of you in to understand where we're going with this, it will kick off in January, we're inviting experts in to speak to it, one of the experts is our very own Tom Bell, who spoke today and outlined a lot of this. The, the intersection of the Cove and Elm Street is one of the most critical areas for us to look at for protecting the, the village and, and a lot of the town. There are others, but that's one of the critical ones, and one of the things we will do is work with the Cohasset Hospitality Partners owners to make sure that that floodgate that is right there on their property is, is really adequate, it may have to be improved, the roads from Martin Street coming into where Cove is now and then off to Porter Street may need to either be raised or there need to be a sea wall, sea wall that goes up, and of course, the Captain's Walk will play an integral part of that, because you don't want to put a Captain's Walk on top of something that's going to flood, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, all of that, it's, it's a complicated, involved conversation we're going to be having in the next period, so I invite all of you to be, be part of that.
Thank you, Tim, and that's exciting that that got started today.
It is, and it's, a lot of good, a lot of good things going on.
Okay, and clearly there's a lot of good things going on with this whole issue, but I know we need to move on too, so is there any final things? Because I know we also have to talk about funding plans for this, but I do want to give our zoning working group time to talk too, so is there any other final thoughts on this, so we can move on to zoning?
No, I don't have any final thoughts, just want to say thank you for the time, and it was a pleasure to come and update you, I'm going to be here for your next item too, for my dismissed.
Yes, you're dismissed.
We didn't have to stay here all night with us.
Really appreciate all your work and help with the conference.
I think you should have to stay and help, definitely.
Thanks.
We'll allow you to leave.
No, no, you don't.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to back there, Cassie, and we'll, we'll chat to you.
So.
Thank you.
We never met in person, isn't that strange?
It's, we're having that happen a lot tonight.
Right, yes.
Isn't it so weird when you know someone on Zoom for so long and then you finally meet in person?
It's been over a year.
Yeah, it has.
Just know where you hit the harbor project, yep, yep, yep.
Well.
Just be in person.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
All right, welcome, everyone.
Yes, exactly.
All right, so we have Cassie and Katie and Woody from our zoning working group, and kind of giving an RFQ update, but I just want to start by saying, you all work so hard, and you have been working so hard, and I know that, I don't think, not everyone realizes how dense and tough it is to be dealing with zoning and tackling zoning, and I just want you all to be thanked for what you have done and what you will continue to do. I just, this is not easy, and I, I'm proud of us for tackling it, and I know that we need to keep tackling it, so thank you all of you for what you've done so far.
You know.
Um, so, and Zach, I'm sorry.
They do all the work, I just sit there and listen, and I have to have people, ought to understand what it's like to go through zoning tables and, and uses, and go bit by bit.
Yeah.
And the work, and, and, and I'm, I'm on the committee, but I mostly listen.
It's complex, it's frustrating.
It's not that hard to believe, but, um, but I really think they've worked very hard, and the town knows it.
And I think it's especially frustrating when certain people, you know, think maybe some things that aren't true about what's trying to be done here, so I really do appreciate what you're all doing, and we have your back.
So, I, I, um, I'm glad we're addressing last night, because I feel very uncomfortable.
I don't blame you.
No, I'm sorry, I feel very uncomfortable, starting in, just, it's a nice conversation about the RFQ, and these are my statements.
That's fair.
My group's statements, so this is a reflection of my perspective on special town meeting last night. There were three factors that were very disappointing about the discussion on Article 6 and Article 7. First, the select board did not step up to the microphone to lend any political support to the articles that they voted on to bring to town meeting. There were a number of voters, new voters at special town meeting, and the lack of participation by elected boards, yours and the planning board, and the dialogue was notable. There was no attempt to moderate the freight train of opposition. Second, developer interests without proper disclosure dominated the dialogue at the microphone. Some of these were elected officials with known financial interests that were not fully disclosed to the community. There needs to be a way for these interests to be recognized and disclosed to the community. There needs to be a process, and the lack of transparency hurt the process last night, did not allow voters to evaluate the merits of the statements being made by speakers. To make matters worse, two planning board members changed their votes in the hours leading up to and at town meeting. One of the meet, one of them was not a change in vote, but was for all intensive purposes, and in the eyes of the public, a change in vote on Article 7. Finally, despite ample opportunities for public engagement over the last six months, the community lacked interest in the work done by the zoning bylaw working group. Zoom was used as an excuse, even though there were six hours of public hearings on October 13th and October 20th, but were actually well-attended. The community and the board structuring the zoning rewrite need to be honest and realistic about the level of community engagement on what is a dense and a detailed topic. I encourage everyone to read Rob Jeffers' post on Cohasset 143.
Yep.
Because I think it aptly summarizes the meeting and the challenges we face as a community. We need a new framework regarding communication. In a perfect world, there will be an executive summary or social media campaign targeted at voters, but we are a small town with limited resources, and our most scarce resource is volunteer committee time. The select board needs to directly address this and what we can improve in this area. Given all the transparency last night, we need to reassess what is possible within the comprehensive zoning rewrite, given the lack of community cohesion and engagement to date. In summary, this was not a process to be proud of. While the working group is here tonight and welcomes any constructive comments, and I really truly mean that, on the RFQ from the select board, we need a zoning consultant that can help us with this comprehensive rewrite, but there are issues internal to our community that need to be addressed before we can truly move full, full, full steam ahead on this initiative, and I, and I say this in the kindest way, it was incredibly disheartening. Um, I understand what happened, and I understand that it's hard to stop a freight train once it starts to go down that road, but there were steps that we, as a community, can take to move forward on this, and, and we need to figure a path forward, because to be honest, if we don't, we're just going to replay this out 15 or 18 months later, having utilized precious time from volunteers such as myself, Woody Chittit, Cassie, Tom Callahan, Peter Pescatori, Jack, who am I forgetting, Paul Cleary? And, and we want to do this work for the community, but we also want to do it in a way that's productive for the community, and is recognizing what the community wants, and to be honest, I didn't get a lot of sense last night that there was interest in making a lot of change as it relates to zoning, and so with that, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to dive into the RFQ, but it was.
Well, I've got a comment too.
Yeah, go ahead, Woody.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we all should ask ourselves, are we happy with the bylaws we have that are, that range between 52 and 35 years old, where most towns, almost every town in the Commonwealth, you know, periodically, every eight, 10 years, overhauls their bylaws? Our bylaws are so antiquated that they, they don't give good, decent guidance to citizens. What they do is, is they're rife with ambiguity, the laws have changed, obviously, in the last 50 years, all rounded up, and, but when you see vested interests, a lot of vested interests, putting forth promulgating falsehoods on a, on a, a five-minute debate platform, that's not how you analyze, let alone modify or understand the content of bylaws, if this is, this is a farce, and if this is the way it's going to continue, the town doesn't, I would have to conclude, perhaps the town doesn't want to change its bylaws, and let it be the Wild West, let everybody, you know, kind of do what they want to do, regardless of what the state laws and, and regulations are. I mean, if that's it, fine, but I'm, Katie's right, yes, in 15 months, we'll, they'll be disheartened, working group, it may have some different faces in it, I promise you.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think you're going to get a lot of volunteers to. I don't think you're going to get a lot of volunteers to jump in on this process if there's no support, or genuine support for changing the bylaws, being equitable, fair, protecting the little people, if you will. You're not out to take somebody, you know, destroy somebody's 200-year-old house, that's bizarre. We all live here, we love this town, but believe me, we are on the verge of a ra, a radical, probably too strong a word.
Maybe not too strong.
Not, but a transformation.
Yeah.
In our town. And, and if we're happy, or we don't want to sort of, you know, make an issue out of it, fine, let us know now.
Yeah.
Don't have, don't have me, or Cassie, or Katie, or anybody else.
Put this much.
Spending 15 to 20 months of our lives on a fool's errand. I admit, we need to do a better job of communicating. Going to have to figure that out, but this, these were people that, you know, if a developer doesn't understand the subdivision laws in this company, you know, they shouldn't be developing anything.
Right, and.
And to say, I don't understand this.
That was, that was a tactic.
They understood.
They understood.
It was a tactic, and I want to acknowledge two things, but I think you both say, you both, you both made very eloquent comments, I absolutely agree with you both. I 100% do agree that we failed in the select board, I take responsibility for that, I think we did fail, but in terms of what Woody said, I also struggled too, because in terms of the way that we look at town meeting, I think, as a select board, as other working groups and boards, you know, that is supposed to be the time where we let people speak and we let the citizens be heard, and I guess for me, I guess I, I struggle ideologically with how vocal select board members should be at town meeting, and I know a lot of other towns have select boards that speak on every warrant article and that are more vocal on every warrant article, and that is maybe a path that this select board should go down. So I, I struggle with that personally as an ideological thing, you know, how much of town meeting should be about letting the voters and citizens speak and how much of it should be us maybe lobbying harder for what we clearly believe in and what we've already voted for. So I do believe it was a fail, and Katie's right, and I acknowledge that to the public, we failed, I failed, it was a select board fail. But I also do struggle because it does feel like there is more pushback than maybe I had expected about zoning in general. And I, I also am worried, Woody, that maybe this town isn't as excited or isn't as for some of this stuff that I thought, and I don't want you to do this fool's errand of having to work for many more months on something that's just going to fail again if the town support isn't there. So yes, we could work harder as a board to, on persuasion, but part of me is worried that we may not have the support even with the persuasion. So it's, that's where I'm struggling personally, and I'm being completely honest about that. Diane?
Yes, I agree on everything you just said, and it was a fail. I, I think that one of the, I think ideologically, as you know, I'm very much, you know, in my, my history on the board, it's been that the select people kind of take a seat. Because it is the people's meeting, and having said that, you know, I, I had some comments in my back pocket, but it got, as far as I'm concerned, it got so far out of hand so quickly.
Yeah.
With misinformation, it would have been, it would have been a battle that I wasn't prepared to actually take up. I will say, it's not a fool's errand, I believe with, to the core. And Jack, you said last night, people want to change the zoning in this town, they want this to change. And so I think what we can do going forward, and we talked about bringing in a consultant for the zoning rewrite, I mean, I, I would be very much in favor of spending almost as much money and having a professional communications plan developed, where, where our work should have been done in advance.
Right.
So where we fail, we fail going out and saying, you know, what's interesting to me is the argument that this was going to, you know, infringe on your property rights and everything and whatnot, Article Seven actually probably infringes more on the average homeowner than Article Six would have, and then, and that just was kind of like, oh, we'll give that one to you because we reach out on this one. It was just so convoluted, and, you know.
Believe in that wasn't a slam dunk, honestly.
No, it wasn't. Right, exactly, by four votes.
Was it only four?
Yeah, four votes for the, for the two-thirds.
Yeah.
So at least according to Rob Jeffers.
Shout out to Rob Jeffers.
So I do think what we have to do is, is, is do as much conversation and advocacy. Again, it's hard, because we have to do things as a board.
Right.
We have to be on this together and have to craft a plan together, and the town needs to craft that plan, and I think the only way to do that is to hire somebody to help us, so that when we go there, we've got the choreography. And to Katie's point, I don't know what you do about people with material interests that are literally giving, I mean, I'm exalted. I didn't sleep a week last night because I kept thinking, I'm never going to talk to that person again, you know. It was really, really upsetting, and I, I feel the pain, and I apologize.
Well, I think we can all agree, I certainly, as a party of one, but I think we probably all share this thought, I respect people that disagree with me.
Yeah.
If they have a good grounding of its philosophy, what I can't really abide are people promulgating falsehoods and blowing smoke by, by people, by others who don't understand the issues. I don't mind if somebody comes to a meeting and absorbs fully and says, Woody, I think you're absolutely wrong, fine. And there were people who are, I consider friends, who were certainly on the other side of the argument last night, that doesn't change my feeling about them. But it's the falsehoods, it's the misrepresentations, it's the personal interests that aren't, as Katie said, put on the table.
It's really hard to fight that. Unfortunately, the misinformation campaign, a lot of times, does work, right? And a lot of these things gain traction, and for me, I do feel like with this issue, it gained traction very quickly in the past week, and it was almost, I, I, I think I was blindsided by how fast it happened, and you're right, we should have been on top of it more. But it was, the falsehoods started very quickly and happened fast and caught fire faster.
I think that's where Diane's, and I'll shut up because this is Katie's.
No, 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 we like your thoughts.
Diane's point about communications is terribly important.
Yeah.
I think we've got to reach out and bend over backwards, if you will, to be sure that people who care are listened to, are given the information they need and conform their own opinions. Unfortunately, five-minute snippets at a town meeting is not where you want to talk about content. Philosophy, perhaps. I'm in favor of this, I disfavor that. Okay, great.
Can I, can I just?
Gina, or hand up next, Jack, and then you can go.
I can't, she's all.
I agree with Katie, I'm sorry. I think too that when we're talking about changing the approach, I think the select board needs to reconsider changing its approach of standing by and letting the town do its thing, particularly on items like zoning.
Yeah.
And we, as a select board, probably all need to understand and be prepared to respond and stand up when things start getting out of control. And frankly, I think it would be my recommendation, like what we did at the annual town meeting with the initial zoning bylaw reforms, which I thought went pretty well, is have advisory and select board.
Speak on it.
Independently stand up and make presentations to help support the committees that we're supposed to support. And so that's my lesson learned, you know? I will not make that mistake again. But I think, to the bigger question about communications, I think now is probably the correct time to learn these lessons and really begin thinking about, are there immediate steps that we can take, including litmus tests that we want to take to figure out, does the town actually support this? For example, and maybe this is something we want the consultants to assist with as we look at the RFQ, you know, are there things that we want to do in the short term, like sending letters to everyone who lives on a private way, saying, here are the two issues, here was the discussion, what say you, weigh in?
Or asking, do you know that you live on a private way?
Yeah, right, right.
I think that was a question.
And here's what your rights are, here's what they are not.
Yeah, do you want to pay for the upgrade of a road when there's more houses built on it?
Right.
Do you want the person developing the property to have to really take a living room or there? I think that's a part of what we need to help work on, plain languaging, but also reaching out, and then giving people the forum and mechanism to ask more questions, and then actually vote at the end of the day in terms of, oh, okay, now I get it. And so I think that there is an intensiveness with zoning reform, but I think to Katie and your point, Woody, I question whether there's a litmus test we all need to go through to figure out before we all extend our mutual, is Cohasset going to support or preliminary support?
Yeah.
This intense work.
I just want to say, like, we did the master plan.
Right.
And this, we wouldn't be here if we didn't do that and get that message. That's, that has, that is what triggered, you know, and you can keep saying, oh, I wasn't around for the master plan five years ago, so I don't really know. You should, we can't keep re-litigating, re-discussing, replanning things every time something doesn't fail. It was very clear that people are very concerned about our antiquated zoning laws. Woody, you made a very compelling case too, but I think, like, literally the horse was out of the barn, probably before Katie even opened her mouth. It's really disappointing. We, really quickly, I do think we should put private way discussion on an agenda. We did come up with a private way policy very specifically to the maintenance of the road a number of years ago, and that's, to your point, that's, I was kind of prepared to go there if I needed to, but again, I, I felt like, at what point am I going to just be arguing?
Right, but I think Katie's right, we should have fought harder with the ship going down.
We should have prepared that.
I don't disagree with you, I think it was harder to, you know, Laura, Jack, you had your hand up next, but Laura, did you have a response to that specifically?
No, I had a different point of view.
Okay, so Jack and then Laura.
Yeah.
Then Cory.
Let's not get too disappointed. We did adroitly manage to disconnect them from, one of the things, if that whole thing had failed, we would have been unable to bring it to the floor again for, what, three years? And that's one of the things we maneuvered at the end, and we got it so it was back to planning board. So let's not forget that. By the way, I'm quite sure that the majority of people in Cohasset support the intent. There's no question in my mind, when I talk about conserving Cohasset's character, I don't care who they are, except for some notorious developers, they pause for a second, they think, and they say, that's why, so let's not get disheartened. The factual issue, I think what we did learn is, when you get into the weeds of some of these things, that we really do have to get somebody like Laura to prepare a booklet, not advocating, but explaining what private ways are. This is a, kind of like a, it's an education that I think the town can do without taking a position, because it should not, government should not take an advocacy position, but that would have, people could have understood that, and we give them the knowledge, and sometimes, demagogues take truisms, which everybody noticed to be true, which really resonate, and they twist them and they use them and apply them falsely to a set of facts, and that's what we saw.
Yeah.
They were talking about things, it's very important, and they are saying, because of this good, positive civic principle, this is going to happen, that disconnect.
Yeah.
I think that, I mean, I saw people there who I happen to know are doing business with some people in there, and they're purporting to be there, and there are others and people who, it was egregious, that I hadn't seen or heard of in 20 years, who were questionable then and are even worse now.
That's our role.
I really had to bide my time on that one.
See, but.
But let's not get, you know, when you, when you get stalemated, and we didn't lose, we were stalemated. And they gave us everything they had, and they were stalemated, so let's not get disheartened. Let's remember that we do have, especially Katie and Woody and.
We might not have them for long though, Jack, I think that's what they're trying to hit to us.
I'm trying to keep them here.
And that's valid, they're.
Remember that. You have the support of the town, they gave it their full out, that was a very coordinated, very, very.
We didn't support them though in the moment, and I think that's the point, like, we, on paper, the support was there.
I think, when we're up as select board, we have to be careful because it is the town.
And that's where I struggle ideologically, just, yeah.
I struggle with that as well. I was sitting there, and I knew I was going to have to speak, but I knew I really had one shot at, and I had to figure out, and when I saw the ship was kind of sinking, we moved it around so we didn't lose. It's not as bad as we.
Diane?
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this, I just want to say, Jack, I agree with every single thing you just said, if you were closer, I'd high five you.
Wow.
I'd like to say that.
I want to see a high five after the meeting.
And I also want to say that, you know, in the back, the appendix, this was as clear, this was as clearly written as possible. I wonder how many people actually read that, and maybe that's what we all should have just gotten up and recited this. It's clear, it's concise, and, you know, I regret that we didn't do more in advance to just boil this down, and, and anyway, so.
All right, Laura and then Cory, and then maybe if we are in the mood to talk about the RFQ, we can.
I want more about the RFQ.
Good.
Okay. Something, I just, I just wanted to sort of take.
Hold on, can we just hold that then? If we need to move on to RFQ, I think Cory has something he needs to say.
No, I mean, obviously, we said a lot about last night, I do want to, I did notice that, you know, the motion to refer it back to the planning board was nearly unanimous. You know, when, when the town was faced with basically killing this or continuing it, thank you, Patrick Kennedy, for, for making the amendment, I think that the, the process was used, you know, aggressively to kind of prevent this, but the town, when it came to vote, hey, do you want to shoot this down, or do you want to see it again at spring, you know, at annual town meeting? I mean, I think I heard four nays, I mean, that was, I think that's, we take reference to say, hey, look, you know, today went a little bit sideways, but the town is there, and I think we need to keep our focus. As for communication, I'm sensitive to what Jack said about, you know, not necessarily for governmental reasons, but, you know, I think that the message when it comes to policy decisions is better coming from elected leaders than town staff or consultant that nobody knows, and I'm talking to my colleagues here, I mean, if we were serious about this, I mean, this is grassroots, the, the, the group that stood up and, and had issues with this, they had a grassroots campaign, and they outmaneuvered us. We have to be able to do the work. I think we kind of sat back and said, hey, we did the work, and we're going to get an A+ on this because we're such good students, and that's not how politics works. So I think we owe it to the zoning bylaw working group to say, if they're going to do this, we got to get our feet on the ground, and we got to start talking to people. And it's not, you know, I try to do videos, but you know what? That's not good enough, you know, and I try to, you know, I need to talk to people because that is how we actually explain this. So I just, to my colleagues, if we're going to do this, we have to be committed to putting in the time, because I don't think we can do it at town meeting, as the moderator said, this isn't the space to debate stuff. We have to have these conversations beforehand, and they have to be face-to-face at neighborhoods, because this is the only way we're going to really get people comfortable with this.
Thank you, Cory, I think that was well said. I'm just going to push back a little bit, just for us to be creative about how we approach this, because this, that's why I do think we need a communications consultant, because there are all kinds of open meeting law concerns. We have to act as a board, and we might all, we might end up with different opinions on things, so we need to be strategic, and the message of the town needs to be clear, and, and we need to be behind that, and I do think that we have a consultant that can help us individually and coordinate.
But after we vote something, you know, and we've all talked about it publicly, you know, I think then we can each go to our, the neighbors that we know, and talk about it face-to-face. I mean, I think that's, that's kind of, I'm not suggesting that the board does it, I think the individual, you have to take responsibility as individuals, individual representative to get this message out there, because we cannot, we can't have a, you know, a road meeting, but we can talk to friends and neighbors and do outreach.
Yes.
And I think that's where we have to make the case. I am very concerned about my idea of, of having kind of a booklet. There are some factual things like what zoning is and what the highways, what the ways are and all that, we went over that ad nauseam. Government, it's like a pamphlet that you get at the post office. You can give a factual, or unfortunately, I get all the Medicare pamphlets from the government, and it just passionately tells me pros and cons. That's, I think, the proper role of government, and the people in the audience last night did not have, they didn't have a working, they didn't. in the audience last night did not have, they didn't have a working, they didn't know whatever. So they are easy prey for the demagogues.
We also don't live in a world now where unfortunately, everyone's just going to read the back of the warrant or the, you know what I mean? We have to be able to be more creative in our communication approaches. And I don't mean creative in terms of facts. I mean, in giving a lot of different opportunities and channels, not just in person, but for people to know what's going on. We just, I wish we lived in a world where everyone did the reading. Right? But we don't. And again, a communication consultant or being more creative in terms of how we're getting out information on different platforms and different levels, not just for this.
We need like illegal women voters too.
Yeah. Some civic people, little, yeah, no, I completely agree with that. Okay. I feel like enough has been said on this. I know we could go on about this for hours more, but.
I'm still saying that. Are we buddies, Diane?
We're good, Jack.
Possibly, if you are tonight, yeah. All right. If, if we're up for it, I don't know if you're even in the mood, any of you, to talk about the RFQ, but Lauren seems to be.
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
So thank you. It's been a lot of passionate conversation. I just, in terms of thinking about why we came to you in the beginning, had this conversation in November 8th, is when you think about the amount of years that have gone by, we know these bylaws are incredibly out of date in terms of best practices from zoning. It makes sense to continue to move forward. So I think if anybody has the outstanding lingering question, do we continue down this path? I think the answer is yes. I mean, even in preparing for these processes with Carolyn Murray, she even said, it's going to be difficult, but stay the course, stay the course, stay the course. It's worth it at the end. And I think what we need to keep in mind, and hearing how last night went, is that there's a lot of work to be done for these zoning bylaws. And maybe phasing it is an option that we proceed with. Because no matter what there's cleanup and recompensation needs to happen, there's also a lot of items that have been flagged that are, as part of our master plan, that we know inherently are going to be policy decisions. Those are things that need an incredible amount of community consensus building, education. That's the portion that's going to need a lot of work and support from the board. Because if that's what you all want to happen, town staff and the consultants are here to help that through the channels. But we live in Switzerland. We can't be the ones making that argument hurt. So I just want to, one, say that I think it's incredibly important to still proceed with the zoning bylaw rewrite process because it will help the community in the long run by cleaning up and doing things. It's also an opportunity to introduce new zoning tools, have some new concepts that, you know, may meet goals of policy decisions, but that needs to be further fleshed out. And we have some information based on the master plan that happened. And I think what we're hearing is that we need more. And we also said in the beginning that we already know that this public engagement needs to kind of come in, step into what we're dealing with today. Because unfortunately, we're in a pandemic that's not going away anytime soon. We need to be looking at different opportunities for communication because it's not how it used to be. You know, people don't always want to come out and, you know, we need to just do our separate communication term. So those are just my thoughts that I want to share with you. And that's all I have for you.
Perfect. Okay. What else do we need to discuss at this point, I guess, with the RFQ?
I am, so I do think that we need to have this conversation tonight about the RFQ. From a timeline perspective, if we don't, if we agree with the stay of the course, we need consultant. And we maybe need more than one flavor consultant. The only way to get that consultant on and forward is through an RFQ process in order to find out what's out there in terms of qualifications, what people, what ideas people are coming back to us with about how to address coacid's issues. I don't know, Tracy, if you have the presentation, but I think it's worth just like flag. The PowerPoint one? Yeah, I can bring it up.
Yeah.
I just want to show the timeline because like, if we don't start this in January, it's going to be May before we know it. And to be honest, like, starting the RFQ process and engaging to get this out there, we can figure some of this stuff out while this is happening in the background. So if you can go to the second to last slide, Tracy? Oh, sorry. Yep, that one. Yes. Okay. So the, the way this timeline works is based on conversations with Michelle and Lauren, we'd like to have the package available the second week of January. So on January 10th, best practices would have an RFQ package out for roughly a month. And so that means that we would be looking to have bids back on February 10th. And at that point, we would know the level of interest and the type of consultants that would potentially be able, we'd be able to engage. You would then go through a process of reviewing those proposals the week of February 14th to 18th. You'd have an interview committee at select the first, select the finalists the week of 21st. We're proposing that the interviews actually take place on March 1st, so that you could hire the person beginning of March and have them on board mid-March. So we don't have this conversation tonight. Won't be in a place to be able to launch this in January. So just, you know, that's sort of the thought process behind this. The one thing is, Tracy, if you go to the next slide, and this is something that maybe you don't want to talk about tonight, but you will need to solve, which is the, there is going to be a need for an interview committee. And the interview committee that Michelle and Lauren have recommended, at least construction wise, for discussion tonight, is three people from town, John Howland, Lauren, and Jen Orem, and then five committee members. And again, this is all up for debate. Two from the working group, two members from the planning board, and one member from the select board. The only caveat is that anybody that signs up for this has to commit to read all the RFQ responses. They will be responsible for grading them via matrix. They need to attend the selection meeting where the finalists are selected. And then they need to participate in all three interviews. And so the key dates for anybody that wants to sign up for this bonus assignment is, they would need to be available February 14th to 18th to review and rank. That's something that could be done remotely. They need to be available for a selection meeting for the finalists the week of the 21st, which is February break. But again, that could be done via Zoom. And it would be a meeting where we would, you would look at the matrices, compare notes, and say, we agree that these three are the finalists. And then we set the actual interview date for Tuesday, March 1st, based on availability of town staff, plus not doing it during February break week. So Tuesday, March 1st, and the thought process is we line them up, one at five, one at six, one at seven, and make it a night. Bring in sandwiches and snacks. So, but the goal would be, again, to have this done by the beginning of March. That's, that's kind of the process piece. We can change and expand the number of committee members. You know, Michelle says it starts to get a little tipsy once you get past 10. I mean, eight is sort of ideal. And again, everybody has to be there. So this is kind of what we set up. So what I would say from here is like, I think the most important thing for tonight, is I don't know if any, if you guys have had time, and I know I've been stretched from a committee perspective. The most important part of this RFQ is actually section four, which is the project scope and work deliverables section. And this is where, you know, if we're serious about fine tuning, this is where we can incorporate concepts like, starting with almost a pre-phase one, which is any kind of litmus test or other, other sort of public surveys that we want to do. And we had talked as a working group about, do we want to do a survey of the permitting boards to formally survey them around what you find are your pain points? Do we want to do a similar survey of the community, like what are your concerns? Do we want to do other litmus tests to kind of tease that out? And then begin the phase one of the process. So that's, if, Tracy, if you don't mind bringing up the actual RFQ, I'll just take a minute and walk you guys through what we had laid out as kind of a phase one, phase two, and what the scope of services were going to be. And again, if you guys haven't had a chance to read it, I totally. In your packets, I have you go to page nine if you guys are electronic.
Katie, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
I second ask you a question. Do you think a good litmus test include for us is to say, let's try to drive home the prior article at the spring town meeting and focus our energy from now until then on communications plan? Because, you know, it's going to be May, it's going to be, you know, 2023 by the time we bring some of this back in. I have a really visceral reaction to the town meeting next year. And here's my thought.
That's fair.
My, my reaction is more time management thing. It takes two and a half months of our committee time to grind through, pardon my French, process. It is painful. And we've had actually this argument. We've all, in the working group, come to the agreement that phasing is important. How many times do you go to the town meeting? Well, it's like, how many times do you want to go through that two and a half month process to then have a town meeting conversation? It is a balancing act between chunking it up into pieces that the community can absorb, but also recognizing if we go to annual town meeting in the spring, we're basically losing February, March, and April to committee meetings and public hearings and a whole bunch of other stuff. So my reaction is like, I'm sorry, we failed this fall. And, but we didn't fail. We, we were, what was the term that you used?
Yeah, we, we very, I think.
It was a fail.
You know, we stopped, we stopped a well.
A postponement?
A well-coordinated offensive. They gave it everything they have. I would suspect, Katie, that the answer really might be that now we have, we go to, say, we had a vote in the fall to put it off to the spring.
So.
So the people agreed to put it off. I think we take what we have with this, right? With the work that we've done. We don't have to do any new work. And we hammer this nail home. We've already got seven. And I think we'll be able to do it.
So here's, so my thought process is, we could certainly do that, but you're, you're going to take away our committee's ability to work on the bigger comprehensive. And my, my personal view is that, that that, it's not, it's still one of the foundations of what happens in phase one of the comprehensive. But if you're asking me to do it at annual town meeting, then I'm not really starting the comprehensive rezoning until June or July.
Just in terms of timeline, if we're looking for planning board, public hearings for an annual town meeting on May 4th, we're having those hearings in February.
I know.
So just want, so everyone's aware, this is like immediate back.
That's why we don't, we don't move to the next step until, we've got this step kind of consolidated. We have a good position. It has been agreed that it needs to go forward, but it was not rejected. So we're going to have to do the other stuff. You know, this is about, this is a three month.
The timeline's critical. That's critical.
Well, you know, we, strategically, when you stop the onslaught, they're stopped, they're going, that's when you go over and you finish the. There are two approaches I've heard tonight.
Yeah.
One of which is to build up from pieces into a comprehensive whole. Another, Katie is talking about, start with a comprehensive whole, W-H-O-L-E. And then you could always subdivide topically. Even if this has to extend out in another year, it seems to be, it may be easier to have a comprehensive view and then take them chunk by chunk by chunk if we need to. Because believe me, a hundred page document, which is probably what we're looking, I hope it's 50 pages or less, but, you know, is going to take a lot of explanation and beyond the can of most people.
You're right.
So I don't know if you guys read Mr. Potter's rescission of his vote. And the reason that he rescinded his vote via email, which could not be reflected at special town meeting, is that he felt like issues were not being addressed comprehensively. He felt like there were things that are being cherry picked and moved forward before the whole. And so that sentiment of why this versus a bigger, A, outlining the bigger picture to the community, and then beginning to chunk off bigger portions in, in a methodical manner, his whole objection and reason to rescind in the end was that he's like, this should be part of the comprehensive. This should not be cherry picked and done. No. And I, and I think if we choose to go the annual town meeting route and then say that, you know what, we made some progress, let's, let's try and hammer it home at annual town meeting, you're going to have, you're going to face the same objection that you're not addressing the whole. It could be a delay, it could be a delay tactic.
Diane. Diane's got her hand up.
Yeah, and I, you know, I see it both.
Yeah, I do too.
Both ways. But the vote of town meeting was to refer it back to the planning board for further discussion and hearings to bring it back to spring town meeting.
It was referred back to the.
Planning board, period.
Yeah, there's no mention of spring town meeting per se.
Well, I'm sorry to bring up the figures from you that brought us sideways. I think, I think the only thing that I might say is, having done this for a long time on the federal level, is that you could put as much effort into one bylaw and the communication surrounding it in three pages and a hundred pages. And it would literally be the same amount of effort for both. Same amount of people, same amount of money, it might take longer, but the pain is going to be the same. And so.
I am totally sold on the pain is going to be.
You're right.
But I only, I only bring up the, the sort of, the initial, well, let's, let's go to town meeting next as a, in part a litmus test, including for us to figure out, can we communicate better? But I think ultimately, the pain is going to be the same. And it's just a question of how much anticipated benefit you want to try to get.
Well, in fact, with a comprehensive communications plan, we can actually present that to town and start socializing where we're at in the process.
That's true.
Of comprehensive zoning. So we can actually put, you know, a committee update, which we typically don't do, but we know we have to. So that's the best way of being honest to town meeting is by having that update.
So the committee, I like the committee update as the response. It's like, we heard you. And here's our response. And here's what, here's what's happened in the spring. A consultant was hired. Here's what's going to happen. Realistically, there's definitely some survey work and litmus work that could be done in the spring before town meeting. But it's going to take a little time to get this underway.
Yeah.
Once the consultant's on board in, in March. So, Jean, the point you raised, we've had like two working group conversations about how many times do we go to the birthing and delivery room on this one? And the answer was for me.
Right.
Or twice.
As fast as possible.
But not every, not every like meeting. And of course, actually, with some of the men in the.
And I would be in favor, I think of that. But again, I'm sensitive to the litmus test issue. And, and I'm also sensitive to, if we're going to do a comprehensive rewrite presented at one town meeting, that's going to put, and I think everyone recognizes this, a lot of pressure on all of us to do tight communication and coordination.
Yeah.
Because you could see people like motion to amend, to amend, to amend, like this line and that line. And if you get out of control, it's not really.
Yeah, we have, we have to commit to it. And just back to the RFQ too, in terms of the timeline, when would you want to have this committee formed by? Would you want us to vote on a select board member tonight to be on that?
I don't think, I think you could vote in January.
Okay.
You don't need that person until February. So my, the point of that slide was to tell you that we need a sacrificial.
Okay. One of us will be willing.
No, in all seriousness.
Stop looking over.
How'd you know?
And I have to say, I mean, the working group has been great and a fantastic group of people. I think we've been sort of keeping each other sane during this. So that's been good. So it's, it's a nice group to work with. So I thought it's, it will be a good process, I think.
We also, I'm sorry, we need to enlist, there are lots of groups that are around town, who are not in government, who are concerned about this. They were absent on the floor. If there had been a number of people on the floor, so the other side didn't monopolize. And you notice, they have them scattered here and there. and you notice they have them scattered here and there, there was, it was scripted, they knew what they were doing, and the, the people who supported that, who are, there are more people support that position than not, but they weren't speaking, and the momentum was lost.
All right, okay.
So, let me, let me just see if I can, I can summarize what we've got down on paper. So we have suggested that the consultant's work will be to help the town with first a timeline, and we've described a phase one and a phase two. We'd like a timeline on phase one, and we would like their help organizing what zoning changes from the master plan could be incorporated into a phase one in preparation for 2023, and what in terms of substantive content changes should be part of a phase two, which would be completed by the town following phase one. And, and the thought process is that we know we need to do a reorganization and reformatting. We also have all of the master plan objectives. As Woody and Lauren have suggested, those master plan objectives are the things that are policy and are gonna take the debate and energy of our collective community to get buy-in around, and so doing all twenty of those at once is going to be probably more than we can.
Yeah.
Quite often choose. And so we are going to have to choose which of those we're gonna do in phase one and which we're gonna say to the community, you know what, this is important, we're coming back to you. But this is what normal communities do in terms of, like, they're continuously improving and working on it. So we finally got to a place where we know that there's a lot here and we need to phase it. And so in, in our world, phase one is the reorganization and reformatting, which shouldn't be controversial, it's the adding and improving definitions, it's rearranging sections to get them in a logical order, it's bringing references up to date, it's sunsetting some stuff, it's adding infographics, diagrams, and visuals to make this document a 21st century document, it's modernizing and reformatting tables for clarity and cohesion, it's hyperlinking. That's part of phase one. It's gonna make our document look actually professional and pretty. If you look, I, I have these moments of jealousy when I'm looking at other town. Oh my gosh, it's like.
It's not on an IBN selector.
Right, right.
But also in phase one, we will have to select as a, as a community what we wanna incorporate from the master plan. I think this is part of the witness test work that the consultant has to help us with, is like, out-of-residential zoning, housing options, harbor, village business, open space, historical, and climate and sustainability, those are like, what is it, eight topics? Seven topics? We could all be able to do them in phase one. So which of those are we gonna pull forward and which are we just going to say to the community, you know what, it's important, but that's phase two. I'm sorry. So that's the way we thought about the project objective. I would say accountability on the bottom of page 10, I mean, this is probably, we actually debated this quite a bit last week, that the selected consultant is gonna work for the town, the town planning, permitting, and inspections department under the guidance of the zoning bylaw working group. That was the structure that we came up with as our recommendation. You can tell us that it doesn't belong with the zoning bylaw working group, or it should only be the town, but ultimately, we believe that, that the consultant has to work for the town, but under the guidance and direction of, of the zoning working group. We also articulated at the bottom of page 10 that town council is going to be involved in insisting and writing, because one of, you will see in the types of consultants out there, some of them are just law firms that are just gonna be your legal counsel. We do not need legal counsel. We have excellent legal counsel. You guys have agreed that we've got access to legal counsel. So we made it clear that we're, the town is going to ensure those resources from KP Law, and that land council is going to be involved, not just at the end of the process, but during the process, in leading, and, and that the working group and town council are gonna take the lead on drafting new bylaw language. There's been quite, there's been debate as to like, do we need a third party to do the drafting? And I think the answer from the working group is, we're actually pretty comfortable drafting language. We've got a lot of experience hands, and we've got solid legal counsel. That's not necess, we, we would love to have the consultant review language and provide best practices and samples, but we don't need them to be our lawyer or our drafter, we need them on other pieces of it. So in terms of the scope of services, that goes into page 11. So on page 11, the scope of services that we've laid out is for the selected consultant to establish a project timeline and phased approach to meet the working group's goals and accommodate various town reviews, approvals, and adoption. Provide formative, provide a formative diagnostic report upfront on the existing bylaws to organize and reformat the existing bylaws based on input from the working group. Conceive a structure and schedule the help prepare materials, and implement a range of public engagement activities, work closely with the working group and town council, and provide necessary materials needed for the 48 club planning, public hearings with the Planning Board. We then go on just.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So, and just, maybe this is also for Lauren.
Yeah.
Just, is this typically how it's done? I, I appreciate the, the willingness to take on the language, but I wonder if, with a consultant, if consultants are usually brought in to, to do the language, and then the board would give feedback on that, or, I just don't wanna get in a situation where we're asking for something which is a little bit atypical. I don't know how this process works, but.
It varies, town to town.
Okay.
Depends on sort of the group base that you have, but this is one of the best practice examples that you can have.
For sure.
Jen Orm, who isn't here tonight, but has sat previously at Town Situit.
Yeah.
In his zoning certification process on a committee that, that worked in a similar fashion.
Where the volunteers did a lot of the drafting, and then, okay, great, thank you.
We have Tom Talladega.
That's okay, he's already rewritten.
Right, exactly. Shout out to Tom. Also shout out tonight, hi, Tom.
Yeah, exactly. No, and, and again, as I said, I think the, the group, sometimes having, certainly having external validation and saying, whoa, like, that's a pretty wild idea you've got there, is certainly the input that we want, or, hey, gosh, have you ever, I mean, this is where Carolyn Murray was like a godsend, she came out of nowhere and said.
Yeah.
A ledge protection, oh, Rockland and Manchester by the Sea, and we're like, we've been, we've been looking for six spots. We asked, you know, our previous, you know, layup council town, nobody had any ideas, like, so that's the kind of help that is super.
Yeah.
Important for us to have.
Well, you envision them like content expert to help bring you, but also help you envision, and also you don't know what you don't know.
For our.
Yeah.
So, at the bottom of page 11, this gets into what we've all been talking about in terms of public, public participation. So this is where we really have focused, the consultant will work with the, the working group and staff to develop a public participation plan, schedule, ensure broad community engagement and significant community input and awareness on any proposed changes. We basically said town staff is gonna facilitate scheduling, advertising, and that, but the consultant's responsible for content materials, consulting with the working group, they're responsible for summaries of inbound input. So the consultant is really doing the heavy lifting on the public participation piece.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Lauren, like, I do not mean to disparage the planning industry at all, but when I think of like content industry and planners, I don't think of like jazzy marketing. And so.
Really?
I.
Hi, poor Lauren.
I don't have a jazzy.
Jazzy ass.
This, this is jazzy, this whole guy?
Jazzy ass.
Well, I'm just wondering if we're trying to.
Raffinate.
Yeah, like, yeah.
It goes back to the communication piece though, too, how we sell it.
And, uh, sorry, Lauren. I'm actually gonna let Cassie address this, because Cassie has done, she actually has a list, I don't know if we sent it to you, we sent it to the Planning Board, a list of, what, fifteen consultants that we've dug up that have done this work, and there's two kinds, I think Cassie.
There are almost three buckets.
Yeah.
It's like the law firms, the planners, and then the groups that do everything from financial analysis, the marketing, community outreach. So there's a, there's a couple different buckets, and like, I love Katie's case, that Katie's just shake the tree, so hopefully that organizes and it's fully vetted, but if anyone else has recommendations, we should reach out to, but I'm surprised to see that there are some groups that.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
That are very comprehensive and look at the big picture on what we need.
Gonna have really pretty powerful questions.
Yes.
That's gonna be important monthly, you know, these letters, but the question, is this RFQ designed in such a way that, let's say, we want to, you know, we want the communications piece separated from a planning.
Of content piece.
You know, like, right, exactly, like, whether there, whether we could write this in such a way that that might be a role, that might be a direction we go in.
Like, literally, my.
Sorry, I know.
That's allowed at this point in the week and night.
I can speak to that a bit. So, this RF, it's non-binding, we can always go back, we don't like any of the responses we get, we can go back out and solicit more. It leaves us with the opportunity, because it's a request for qualifications, to pick, we won't see, the, the price material will be in a sealed envelope, we will be, pick and rank them based on our qualifications alone, and at the end, we'll sort of find out what their pricing is, and then that becomes the negotiation. There's an opportunity, if necessary, to amend this and split that. If we, for example, because also to Jean's point, we will, I'm sure, get some really, really qualified people that are not very dynamic and not very good at communication in sort of a, a dynamic sense.
Or the opposite.
Or the opposite. We'll provide bright presentations, but be dynamic with no substance. We may get a variation, and if, it comes to a time that we need to go back and sort of split, and, and think about a phased approach, is even who we bring on our consultants, that's something that we can accommodate during our RFQ amendment.
Yeah. And I would say, in the list that Cassie came up with, it was clear that there are, there are different partnerships that have been formed, so like, you see, you saw this guy, Bob Ritchie, appear in a couple different platitudes, in some places he's partnering with different folks depending on, it's sort of like that contractor subcontractor, they do kind of partner and reform to bring their skill sets together. Now, the only concern I, I honestly have is that this is, I think Bedford did their RFQ in the spring, and they were, A, surprised at how expensive it was, and B, there wasn't like this crush of like twenty great firms that responded. So, you know, I, I think we're asking, we're asking for what we need, whether those individuals, A, stepped forward, or B, you know, are dynamic, or have that right combination of skill sets, we're just gonna have to see, but I think, I think, starting with asking what we need is the only thing that we can do, and then we can, we can tact, depending on what we see. And if we decide that we need to modulate this and, and really just, if people aren't having the public forum or communication skills as we want, then maybe we just focus a separate RFQ on that.
That's a good point. I think it's worth separating, possibly.
I think Cassie and Lauren and Katie should make this decision, and, and Woody should oversee it.
Oh, thank you, Jack. Jack, I'm on vacation that year.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Yeah. Anyway.
Okay, so.
And again.
I feel bad, we're so behind.
No, 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 we were, we were trying to, we were trying to, we were trying to set this up in a, in a framework so that we were soliciting input along some of these public, so we listed out public forum and engagement ideas, not prescripting what they needed, but saying, here's some of the things that we've come up with, and the expectation is the RFQ is gonna produce ideas, and, and we're gonna be able to look at these RFQs and say, gosh, wow, this is really interesting combination of ideas that we would have never thought of, and that's the ideal scenario. So that's the public engagement part, that I think that, to be honest, as I kind of read this in cold light of all the communication, I don't think that we have like a really firm communications request in here.
You mean, that, that probably should be.
It should be, I think, I, I.
It sounds like after this discussion, that definitely should be.
I think, you know, we've, we've got the, we've got the, we've got the public participation, we've got the kind of the basics of the reorganization and the redraft, we don't have communication. So I would actually suggest that we add something, you know, between A and B that addresses communication, and so.
You know, I've been thinking that, that if you, if you take the eight to ten-year cycle that most towns go through, and.
Yeah.
We're in a fifty-year cycle.
Right.
In many ways, the townspeople themselves have been trained to look at zoning updates, and actually, the zoning updates are, are, are smaller in, in magnitude, because, you know, you shouldn't overhaul everything every, every ten years.
Right.
You should update it. And I don't think our citizenry is used to.
They're not.
Dealing with this. So communication, first out of the box, you know, on this little overhaul, is probably critical, critical. You know, years from now, long after I've gone elsewhere, people will, will have gotten used to, I think, a cycle, a reasonable cycle, and say, okay, I understand the process, because it was only ten years ago, and they've chosen to update this or that. And I think it'll be an easier process once we get through this very messy first.
Right, Woody, psychologically, it's scarier just because the voters are not seeing this on the.
Right, so, so communication is maybe ultra-critical, first, first out of the box.
Yeah.
I think.
Yep, okay. So I think, I think, to be honest, the biggest input, and just having gone through last night and the conversation we've had with your board, I think communication is the thing that we're missing, that we will add in and make it clear. Now, this may not be a skill set that pops up, but if it doesn't, then we just pull it out of the RFQ and we do it separately. I, I think that's, I mean, honestly, my eyes are literally glazing over. I really think that's it in terms of like, what we need your input on.
Okay.
Unless there was something else that you guys wanted to, you guys did read it and have.
And we can revisit in January if we all want to.
Well, this has, this has the issue, so, we probably won't see you before this.
Before the fourth? You don't, okay.
Unless you want to, unless you want to meet us in your first meeting, but the, the goal was to publish this January 10th.
And we typically don't see RFQs.
Right, right.
Just a couple of quick little things. One is, Michelle, remember, can just do a, a search, but it does say board of selectmen at one place.
Okay.
Just make that, and then I, the, the part that you brought up about the thing you said you had discussions on, I just wanna make sure that the, the authority, the accountability.
Oh, the accountability, that.
That the, the structure is appropriate and, you know, by, by law, and, and even in earlier mentions, I think it might, I don't know, but out in the world, it might give you, might weight this differently if it says the town of the asset acting through its board of selectmen, or the, the select board charged zoning bylaw working group or whatever, because the town of the asset, our committees can't act on behalf of the town of the asset, only the select board can, you know, so.
Just language.
It's, it's just the, it's just the, the hierarchy of mentions of the various committees.
I'll, I'll, I know. Lauren, the wording, okay.
Yeah. I wanna make sure it supports you, that this is coming from us, that this is coming from the town.
I originally, I originally had language in here that said it was to the town directed by, with policy direction from the select board and the planning board, and our working group said, wow, if I was still reading that you've got like three committees in town, like, I'd be like, no thanks, I'm done. So we, we, we actually changed the accountability language, but.
I think Diane's talking about empowering.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna make it so it looks like the select board has.
And I mean, technically, you know, a consultant working for the town shouldn't be reporting to a committee person, you know, they don't actually, they're not accountable to the committee or accountable to the town. Could I make a suggestion on that point? Maybe the first time, but you described who you are and who would use the power, just say all the committees and the law, and then just say collectively, town of the asset, and then put that throughout, and then you're done. Yeah, exactly. And then it makes that easier for the.
And then the internal.
That's a good point.
Who they're calling and when is.
Yeah, yeah.
This is kind of the practical operations of things.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? This is a lot. Okay. And I just really wanna apologize about our brick rant update people waiting in the way, because we are so sorry. All right, funding plans for Elm Street and zoning, I know we've kind of touched on this a little bit in the past hour.
So, Katie. Uh, I, the committee can disperse if they would like.
I'll sit up here, disperse this one.
Okay. I'll chair over for Chris.
No.
You can, you're allowed to go home.
I know. I didn't want to hear this.
Okay. So Chris and Lauren can take. Okay, so Chris and Lauren can take.
I am.
Woody, you're welcome to stay up here if you want, we're not kicking you out of the table.
I know, I, you don't have to worry about, very sensitive.
Cassie's on master plan, so.
I don't think I can.
Okay.
Hey, Woody.
Yes, thank you, Woody.
Woody?
Yeah. Thank you all.
But a nice little conversation, uh, so now you have to fund it.
Yeah, we do.
To, uh, to go backwards, I guess, it's retirement zoning, so I was just, we, we, the state has allocated, uh, to Senator Connor's office, and Skinner's office, fifty thousand dollars for other complexes we need to improve, so we have that money to save it, correct, now, we're gonna need probably another fifty, I think, that's, that's one twenty-five, so we'll actually have a hundred seventy-five total, fifty for, for the village, which I, I think is a, a key piece of this, uh, and then, um, another fifty, so I'm gonna circle back with Don about, um, seeing if we can purpose out an apartment that we have, because it, it was all part of zoning, as he can develop it in, in my opinion, so, um, I think that's reasonable, so you don't have to vote on that.
Okay.
And that's, if, if this objection can be taken, that's, so we plan to come back, Don has been really trying to grind through this to get a clearance on how we can spend this money in, in general sense, so, um, the hope is to come back in early January and say, here's what we want.
Okay.
We're spending it every time.
Yeah, spend every time.
So we have a plan at Arpa, it's not, Diane, you're questioning?
Yeah, so the alternative, if, if we can't do that, we still have money in the consulting lobby, we can bring ten million last year, so we can take some money.
Diane.
What do we anticipate this costing?
Well, we put all these, these, these three pools together, we were originally budgeting about one fifty, uh, but we lost the, we didn't win the grant, so we had, we put another, we actually think we might have a hundred seventy-five, I think this is maybe more robust communications and engagement things, like, I mean, what's fun with that?
So we anticipate that the cost will be a hundred seventy-five, we're just trying to piece together the, where the money's coming from.
Yeah, seventy-five last night, it was fifty for the state, which is really focused more on the village and all of that, and then we're trying to pull another fifty to get to a hundred seventy.
I don't know, I don't know how that village money is gonna help us.
Off the scene, off the scene, how broadly we get to spend.
Okay.
The, uh, and that's, so that's that, so I think I'm gonna, um, and we need to do more, the more we can, uh, the, uh, to go back where we started, the thing on these conversations on Elm Street, so, um, to get to the next phase is about four million dollars, and that, so if that is a priority, again, I, I, I fully appreciate the concerns, 'cause I share them, about how you fund the whole thing, um, at the end of the day, so, if we're gonna be teed up, the town, if this is a priority, and it was gonna be teed up for potential grant funding, we need to get further along in planning processes, so the town could take, could take two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand from our chapter ninety, we've had, grew, uh, and it's available, and we put it towards the next phase of Elm Street, which will take us the next step forward. Again, so that's, so I, I need a, again, so you'll have to determine if that's the right.
Okay.
Set, 'cause I, we could, I could, we could move the money out of, that's how I, it has to be, I don't wanna take, that is an opportunity, 'cause we spent on that, we don't spend on something else, Brian Dresser already has a father of things, like, but, uh, uh, but that said, it's completely appropriate for something like this, right, and, and, and.
Yeah.
Get us, the key is to use it to unlock potential other things, funding, you know, four million dollars, and that's, that's the town's.
Yeah.
Split, it's.
Yeah.
That said, there's potentially lots of money.
I, I was gonna say, is there any possible more infrastructure, build back better?
Yes, yes, there is.
Money that could be flowing in for this particular, these particulars?
What about, but if Elm Street, if the Elm Street corridor project wasn't on the table right now, the water program, the water department would be completely repaving that road, which, if I understood what you were saying earlier, they're not, they're going to do more of a temporary repaving of that road, is there, is there money left from that, what ultimate, the ultimate cost might have been that we could use, because that's gonna be a part of all this money?
Yeah, I remember the, the, the one thing was, there wasn't allocation for the entire Elm Street project.
Right.
One for one, uh, and much like the sewer and harbor and tire mold roads, sewer pro, little harbor and other things, the sewer, it's painful, I, I don't know, yeah, we have to see where the project is, we've been fortunate in, in the recent years to have projects come under, in some cases, very special. This is a little more complicated, uh, work that's being done, but we find out, so, that's for repaving, that's not down the road.
Right, I would say, yeah, let's say the normal repaving for that stretch of road, to bring it to, you know, the best conditions that's gonna last fifteen, twenty years, is, I'm making the number up, a million dollars, well, they're not doing it to that level, and they're only spending seven hundred fifty, is there two fifty, can we repurchase the, the purpose of this entire project?
I don't think they'll get every.
Ultimately, we're just gonna have to get paid.
Yes, that, that said, when we repave a road, it's nobody's to repay, right, this is a reconstruction, really, it's, it's curbs, it's new sidewalks, those, you expect doing that, you get a lot of, sidewalks alone, they're expensive. That said, that, the planning, the key though is, is the planning for this, this other design, continue the process, um, and to get to, um, into, is it seventy-five percent we get to at this, this next stage?
This next stage should be two thirty, maybe.
So, is that, if that's a priority of board, then I can move, we can take two fifty out of this chapter ninety, we can continue with that, well, again, you can either, again, I, I'd like, I'd, I'd like you to take a vote on that, uh, because it's a lot of money, and again, it's an op, it is an opportunity, because we don't use it for that, we'll use it for something else, there's definitely things that we spend on. Um, that said, if you, if we're gonna be eligible for grant money, we're gonna need to be further along in the process.
Chris, you're, I, 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 you're mumbling so much because of the mask, it's hard, you're.
Oh, okay, so, we can all try to speak a little louder, we're getting tired.
The question is that, the question of the board is, do you wanna proceed with further planning on the Elm Street project, as Lauren, the consultant, laid out, for about a quarter million dollars, we'll take it out of chapter ninety, or do you wanna just hold that for time? About.
Amy? Um, I personally would like to hold the money, I think that we have just so many different demands on the board, from the brick micro grant, you know, the ongoing school project, field study, town hall, uh, sidewalks, uh, I think we need to just lay everything out in our comprehensive infrastructure plan that we've been talking about doing, and look at how all the money flows, including, if we, for example, allocate the chapter ninety money, then we get ourselves more eligible as compared to if we spend this or that, but I, I do think that I would feel more comfortable doing these big expenditures if we had an overarching sense of the pie and where all the money was going, and also the unintended consequences of if we spend something on this, and, and this is, I don't know, this is this particular project, then it takes away from another priority we were counting on addressing, I, I just don't think we have a sense of that, I personally don't, and um, it's hard for me to address that without having, uh, that process, including capital budget and advisory.
I'm also struggling, 'cause I feel like there's a lot of potential money out there that we don't know if it's coming or if it exists yet, and I think part of my struggle is figuring out how to navigate that and that timeline, I do know we're gonna be having a meeting in January with capital budget, you know, and, and discussing all this stuff, but I also, I guess I'm saying we're never gonna have complete information for this either, so at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision, but I'd be okay with holding it tonight, I just don't think we're ever gonna have, I don't think we're gonna have that info, Jean, that you just said, by the time we need to vote on it, if that makes sense.
But at least we'll have, I think at least.
A little more clarity.
Set of documents to say, here's all the asks lined up.
And Diane and Jack put their hands up at the same time.
Well, Diane.
I mean, I feel, just for a couple of reasons, one, I'm tired, and two, I do wanna look at it a little more holistically, so I'll feel more prepared, um, but, I mean, what would happen, 'cause I know Elm Street corridor is a, is a priority, and I know we have to move it along, and, and in order to get to a point where we can actually do something, and, and to, to Davis's point, this is something that's been discussed by, by harbor, by, you know, village revitalization, it's a big, a big piece of the master plan, um, if we were to defer a vote to our, like, our first meeting in December, I mean, uh, January, is that gonna throw us way off?
That's my question, too.
I don't wanna stop this project and have it be done, I just want to, to Jean's point, have a little more information so that I can, 'cause it's a lot of money.
It is.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah, I don't think so, when I refer to.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, I think waiting until the first week in January would be an appropriate timeline, any further amount, we really do need an answer as to whether you wanna move forward with this project or not, because if not, then, that, you know, then, then the public works doesn't really need to continue to plan, they're rotating the process around us.
I, because it's the holidays, though, are we gonna be able to have more info by the first week to at least help with this decision, I guess I just, it, just timing wise, in terms of holidays, I'm worried that there's not many workdays to, to, for us to get more info, so I want us to be aware of that, too.
That's a fair point, I mean, even if it was on the fourth, it could be done during Jan.
Okay, that gives me a little more, you know, I'm a little more calm about knowing we have a little more time in January, I'm nervous if we have to decide this by the fourth, I'm not sure we're gonna have as much info as we do tonight. Jack?
Yeah, I think the, well, we run the risk of getting piecemeal, all this stuff's really good, we do this, and we do this, and then suddenly, we have a cash crunch, and then we have something that really needs to be done, we can't fund that, and I think we need to be very careful that we don't set ourselves up for people who are anti-doing anything and using this as a cudgel, you know, a, against us, and I also, I, I'm getting a little uneasy, and I think a lot of people in town are, of all these wonderful things, but what is the overall financial impact, and what is this, this good little thing here, and this good thing here, so, I really think that we ought to be, um, maybe having Don give us an overview of all of this, and it's just your basic, you know, uses and sources of, of finance.
Well, that could be during the joint, or the meeting we have with capital budget, too.
Well, I'd like to see it well beforehand, the, the other thing I find is very difficult to make a decision when you get information two days before, um, so, uh, I think we, that's why we do have a infrastructure in, in town hall to provide that, so, I mean, our job is to, is to give the thousand-foot overall perspective, and, and we need information to do that, and, and if we don't have that, it's very difficult to make the decision.
All right, so it sounds like we're not taking a vote tonight, we're gonna block on this, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, so, I mean, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna break with my colleagues here, you know, chapter ninety funding is for transportation, is that correct? It's, it's not, we can't use it to build a school, we can't use it to build town hall, we can't use it to improve water, it's for transportation, all right, so if we do spend this money on this, the opportunity cost we're talking about really is, maybe we don't pave something else later on, or it's another side of, but it's basically, we've got a linear foot problem, right, where, you know, basically, you know, with our money, we can do ex linear freedom project, and what are the priorities, I mean, I think Elm Street is one of the few streets in town that everybody uses, I mean, we have police, we have fire, we just heard about the, I didn't even think about the, the hundreds of kids that are on their bikes going down the harbor back, you know, we have speeding problems, we've heard from community residents that are really scared about their kids, I think that, you know, we may not have data to support that we have kids getting hit, but I think we've got enough stories from people saying this is a problem. And I think for the, the idea of, you know, if we are expecting more money down the road, this board has said before, that we expect town staff to do everything in their power to go after grant funding, this is part of that step, so, if we expect the town to be able to get grant funding, to advise that, we have to develop the plan more, if we think we're gonna get more money for infrastructure, there may be other projects we can do. So to me, you know, I, I don't mind delaying till January, but if this is a priority, and we think it is, this is what chapter ninety's for, um, so.
Diane and then Katie?
No, I, I, you know, I, I feel the same way, like, I, I don't, this, it has been identified as a priority, and I, I hate revisiting priorities when you go through major planning processes to, to move projects along, so, um, my, my question also is, with, with respect to chapter ninety money, if, if there is other money that comes in, let's say there's, uh, build back better money that we get, I mean, is it possible that some of that could be used towards roads in Elm Street?
It's highly unlikely that any of the road budget is gonna be, federal standards on roads are very complicated, and we just don't eat, the, 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 the process for funding roads is not gonna triple that, it would just, it just not.
It'd be nice, but.
Park plants, super plants, things like that, yes, because those are, those are sta, those are sta, but for roads, it's highly unlikely, we have, we have tertiary roads, we don't have major roads, um, besides, like, federal standards, yeah, I know.
Thank you, and, and I, you know, I'm, I'm moving more to, to Cory's point, and this is a priority, I, I've been committed to it, I've gone to the meetings, um, you know, I know there's still a lot of details to work out, there always are, but we, we're not gonna get anywhere unless we make the investment in, in getting to, uh, you know, this thirty fifty percent.
So I was just going to reemphasize that the, the master plan implementation committee came forward with five implementation priorities, we layered in another five, but we only did it, and we were very specific with your board and the planning board, but th, those next five only get phased in when per, we finished the first five, and so I, I appreciate what folks are saying, in fact, I just had a conversation tonight about sidewalks, but the reality is that sidewalk funding has to be a year-two-plus priority, we cannot sit here and debate, like, if we spend two hundred fifty thousand on a year-one priority Elm Street, it's an opportunity cost against a year-two priority, it just, we will never get any of these implementation priorities done if we don't finish or keep on dedicating the majority of our resource, maybe not all of them, the majority of our resources to the first five, until they're, to the point where they're grown up and they've blown the coop, I just, that's what I'm struggling with, because I, I
Yeah.
I'm equally adamant about sidewalks, but I'm like, folks, we gotta get something done, and then we can move on to sidewalks, um, and there's, again, it's just.
No, you're right, it, yeah, I guess my question, I mean, the, 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 I, I agree with Jean that the numbers are big, and we need to, we need to have a spreadsheet that tallies all this stuff up, um, so that we know what the total nut is, but we can't,
we have to stick with what we've laid out with priorities, or we have to have a conversation of ditching priorities, because like, I'm, I'm confused, like, we, we agreed that Elm Street was going to be something.
Yeah.
Um, and so, that's where, that's where I'm at.
That's an important distinction, too, that, that master plan came up with, you know, to fix, like, the.
Yeah, there were like ninety priorities, and.
There are a hundred and thirty-eight priorities that we went through, and we chose five.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking of the next five, and we're, we're starting to, I mean, like, Chris has gotten his fifty thousand to work towards Village, like, we're having sidewalk conversations, we will be bringing a connectivity plan forward, it will cost money, but we won't be able, it's like, I know I wanna go on a vacation, but I need to save up for that.
Right.
I feel like some of these priorities, we know they're priorities, but.
Yeah.
We still gotta take the trip to Disney and then it's the road, start saving for the, the next, next priority, so I.
I think we can agree till January at this point. With this offer, at least till January.
Yeah, so I.
So I don't, you know, we've got other stuff to do here, it's getting pretty late, so there's a consensus, I think, for January, if we wanna discuss it further in January, we can, yeah.
I, I, I'm okay with waiting till January, because I respect what Jack and Jean are saying, but I also wanna make sure, like, we, we will have to make this decision in January, and we can maybe can have a little more info in terms of a spreadsheet or getting Don in to talk to us, but I don't think we're gonna have all of the info that we'd ideally want, and so I do think we're gonna have to make a decision in January, but I'm okay waiting.
Unless we're not changing priorities or anything.
Do you want, I mean, we can take it a vote, if you want, Cory, if.
Okay, we're just, we got a busy January coming up, so, that said, it's, we're in the process of planning anyway for town meeting, and, yeah, so this is the right time.
All right, so, again, this is a great discussion, I don't think we expected all three of these to take as long as they did, but I think it needed to happen, so, thank you all.
Can I just confirm on January meetings, because I know there is deadline, we're gonna meet on the fourth and the eighteen.
And the eleventh.
And the eleventh.
And the eleventh.
A lot of this is a communication special meeting.
So.
I, I, I'm gonna make a motion, just, we'll see if we can get through it, I mean, I think we, I make a motion to approve the two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of chapter ninety funding for the purposes of the, uh, moving forward the Elm Street corridor project.
Awesome, all right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I just, I think it's a huge amount of money, and we're talking about also trying to use ARPA funds to expand the gap, it's not just the chapter ninety, it's ARPA, which we've also simultaneously set aside for town hall, for village revitalization, maybe the brick grant, so all of these have a domino effect. So, all of these have a domino effect. And again, I think that we just have to be really careful about it. And to be frank, I'm not sold on, this should be a five to six million dollar project. And I really wonder if our town is. And I hear it's a priority, but I'm not sure if, you know, people who think that it's a priority think it should be a five to six million dollar priority. It, it's just the, the way I feel. I, I think that it can be right-sized, maybe to something more reasonable for, you know, what the actual public consensus may be behind this. I already said my piece on it, but I think there's a bunch of things going on, and I'm, I'm really worried about the, the free fund, the limited fungible cash we may have, including to span the gap of the two fifty, um, that people are mentally allocating and not realizing for other stuff. And again, are you any concerned?
Can I just have clarification on the two fifty, because my understanding was it would be all Chapter 90 money?
Okay.
So, that was a motion. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Uh, Jack, great. Nay. Or if it's aye?
Jeanne Haley.
Oh, whatever. One, one of you voted.
Diane Kennedy.
Carrie Thompson, nay. I think we need to wait till January, like we just discussed. Okay. To be continued. Thank you all. All right, I know it's hard to be excited at this hour, but we have a, a brick grant update. If our brick grant people are still there, Tanya, I don't know if they're still there. Thanks.
Sleep.
Thank you, the both. Tanya, I'm so sorry. I don't know what else to say. This was, it's just been a, you know.
Wait a minute, she's sitting there, and we're here.
That, that, this, I don't wanna say this is why I said I would do this by Zoom, but when I looked at the agenda, I thought I better do this by Zoom. Um, no, this is great. Look, we're gonna be fast. I can share my screen. This is a quick update.
Thank you. We love these updates, and we're obviously very excited about the brick grant, so thank you for being here.
No, I'm, I'm glad you're excited. If I could get the, um, screen share capability.
Don't get it.
I'm disabled right now. And, and as we're pulling this up, I will say, um, kudos to the town.
Kevin's just on his way with the five-minute rule, just so you know.
Okay, um, kudos to the town and the procurement team for getting the brick grant in, in record time, um, last week. It is always hard to do a grant proposal for the federal government, and it, it's just, and I feel like we have such a strong proposal. Um, so, we're just gonna give you a quick update and then some more things to chew on. Uh, but a lot of this is repeat, just for completeness. So, we're gonna touch quickly on what the ultimate project scope was, the benefit cost analysis using the FEMA approach, how we think this pays for itself, our share would pay for itself, but there's still a lot of uncertainty about whether or not we can either go forward. But again, kudos to the, um, town manager, procurement staff, and the grants team. Uh, here's where we are. This is our map. Um, we are here in the week of December sixth. We submitted to MEMA our proposal. We have ticked and tied the boxes, and, uh, we think it's a very solid proposal. Um, the next six weeks consist of finalizing the proposal with MEMA. They are not the gatekeeper, but they will be looking at the proposal as we've submitted it, identifying where we might need to bolster it, or where we've done it wrong, or where there are shortfalls. And, um, then MEMA will rank order the proposals, and this goes to National Beauty Contest. So, it's a national contest at FEMA. One of the inputs will be MEMA's ranking, and, um, we have no idea how they would rank us. But they have said to us, as long as we have a benefit cost, um, ratio over one point oh, they are not the gatekeeper. There's also lots of go-no-go decision points. We're not asking you to say, okay, let's go for it now, and we're committed all the way through. Um, but most certainly, if something comes up, we wanna pull it from the submission to FEMA. We can do that. We might have to anyway, depending on what MEMA says. Uh, we might withdraw it during deliberations. When FEMA says we're awarded it, we're still not committed. We phased it into a phase-one study and a phase-two implementation, um, so we can do a little bit more research if we still want. Um, we would have to take it to town meeting for funding potentially, or set up an enterprise fund. So, there's just a lot of places we can exit, and I will also say there's a lot of places where National Grid can exit. And they can exit without even saying they're exiting by simply giving us an excessive interconnection cost estimate that blows the whole project away. So, um, National Grid has been very collaborative working with us, but they, at, um, multiple points as well, can exit if they decide they don't wanna proceed with this. It is, um, exciting for them. It's also a potential threat. Uh, but it does, as we've shown out with their numbers, help improve the town's reliability, um, especially for half of the residents and half the businesses. So, we are not alone. Just so you know, we have around three thousand homes, one fire station, eighty-five unplanned outages under normal conditions. These are not storm outages. These are normal blue-sky conditions over the past four years. Uh, California's senior community also got some press, because they're moving forward. Oh, they have around the same size, which is what made this interesting, thirty-two hundred homes, one fire station, and they had nine non-emergent shed-offs in the past four years. I just wanna emphasize how bad our situation is. And I think it's that alone that should help us, um, get a hearing before FEMA. Um, so, lots of towns across the nation are looking at microgrids for solutions. We are in the front of the pack, we feel, um, and hopefully, uh, we might be able to get some opportunities here. So, just to reboot, we are combining a backbone, batteries, rotating generator, which we already have some rotating generators at the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant, and solar. The solar is not included as part of the grant. Um, we went through this before. This is sort of layout of where the ultimate proposal, and, and we can still move some of these around. But where the ultimate proposal puts the batteries, which are the diamonds, um, integrates potentially the solar. Um, those are the stars, and then the, um, hexagon at the water plant is the rotating generator. And as you can see, it really, um, touches upon the eighty percent of our, um, eighty percent of the critical facilities. It straddles the two, um, the two circuits that we have. This is where some of the problems happen, really bolsters that middle area, and it covers, as we've already said, half of, um, the residents. It also provides power to ten of our fifteen cellphone towers. This was an additional gimme that we discovered. And for the privately-held grinder pumps along Gerslim Road, which is a really bad street in town, it would provide them with power and improve, uh, their power supply for purposes of grinder pumps and velocity. So, everybody benefits, some in different ways, um, but most certainly the water, um, focus on the water plant, the wastewater treatment plant, privately-held pumps, as well as the critical infrastructure warming stations, schools, and town operations. Um, because we are proposing to put one of the batteries at Town Hall, and all of the schools, and of course, emergency response centers, including the Harbor Master. So, so this is slightly different from where we had it before. We moved it off the wastewater treatment plant, because that is in a, um, sea-level-rise area, ranked DA-nine in FEMA. They don't like putting assets at, um, places that, um, could be susceptible to flooding, which the water plant is, wastewater treatment plant is. So, that's where we ultimately, we can ultimately change these. If we wanna change them, put one back at the senior center. Maybe there's someplace else we wanna put it. This is where we put in the proposal. Pogitate on this. If there is a priority that we're not aware of, let us know. Um, this is a timeframe. Phase one would be basically the first seven, eight months, and, um, it would cost a million dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand of which would go to National Grid for their study. Two hundred and fifty thousand we budgeted for the town to be able to procure, uh, put out, you know, negotiate the contracts, put out a request for a proposal for an EPC to oversee phase two. Um, and then phase two is the actual build-out of the backbone of the grid, the generator, the batteries, the, uh, microgrid management software a, and all of that. So, this was required as part of the proposal, so we sort of plotted out. And they want the project to be done in three years, so we sort of timed it, timed it to that. But there's no reason why we couldn't do it within that period of time. We're also very proud of the fact that we received multiple letters of support, National Grid, of course, Siemens, who's a microgrid manager, GE, and Nexant, who did our microgrid studies for the DPW station, the police-fire station, and leading cities. Um, the key message from all of them was, this has lessons and applicability outside of Cohasset, um, including to any town that's located at the end of the line, any town subject to climate change and sea-level rise, and any town that has poor power supply, including disadvantaged roads. So, we included those letters because partnerships show foundational strength and applicability, uh, elsewhere. Um, our benefit cost analysis came in a little bit lower, even with the telecommunications power benefits. Uh, we got to one point one-five. If you recall, our original estimate was in the one point two range before social benefits. That is enough to, if it holds, allow us to submit to FEMA. And it's just, under the FEMA system, you have to do it online. If you don't have a benefit cost ratio above one, you can't press send. You just, you can't do it. So, they're not even gonna contemplate anything that's below one point oh. And I think what I said before is what they didn't do is they rank order them, um, from highest cost benefit, benefit-to-cost ratio to lowest, and they just start dishing out the money to the ones that show the highest benefit. Before they do that, they scrub that analysis, um, quite, quite significantly. So, hopefully, our analysis will hold and, um, will be ranked ordered as that. The costs, um, we separated, as I said, into phase one. We realized that we were very, very conservative on the interconnection costs and the rotating generator costs. Mainly, the interconnection costs were already incorporated into our overnight costs that we were using for the rotating generator batteries, so we pulled that out. So, we're down to twenty-nine point one million capital costs, um, and those costs include contingency costs and interconnection estimates. And we think with a microgrid manager who would operate these assets outside of outages, that we would be able to cover the twenty-five percent share from the town with, um, wholesale market sales of energy and capacity into the ISO New England system. It, it's not certain, but these are very conservative assumptions, so that is good. Could be one of those things that pays for itself. There's also an ability to get the seven point two million dollar commitment down with state funding, vendor contributions in kind, and stateside cost socialization. So, um, microgrid tariff may not have to be paid for completely by us, but again, these are unknowns. We are hopeful. But I know seven point two, seven five million is a lot, especially with all of these other demands. Again, a lot of exit ramps. If in a prioritization, this is in a priority. But what we will say is, we do know power supply to this town is a problem, big problem. And, and I think we take for granted how problematic it is. It's not normal, and I say this every single time. So, we ranked around eight solutions, just to put this in perspective, where it fits in. Underground all wires have a very, very high cost, but it's very highly effective. If we put everything underground, it'd be great. Um, Colorado Springs has everything underground. Most towns in California have everything underground. We don't, except for certain areas. Um, where those are underground, they're a hundred years old, so they're gonna have to be brought back up and fixed soon. Um, it'd be great if we could get somebody else to pay for it. Nobody wants to pay for that. New transmission line, it'd be nice, not have to go through the same substation through Situate and Norwell. I don't see Hingham or Weymouth allowing us to go through their towns to give us another extension cord to ISO New England system. Um, but it'd be effective if we could, but it'd also be very expensive. Municipalization, we've already talked about. Prozac Constance hasn't been done, has not been done for a hundred years. Still have to spend money on either undergrounding or approving. We can install residential batteries. We could get a microgrid without FEMA money. Vegetation management is a cost-effective approach. Renewables isn't helpful if we don't have a distribution system that would bring them to the load. And so, in our minds, of all of these potential solutions, which is a whole nother conversation, that microgrid with the FEMA money continues to be the relatively effective and least costly option, um, compared to the others. So, this is general. We're looking to, uh, you know, maybe in three months, six months, um, when a final go-no-go decision comes, if we get an award, to rank order these with more numbers around them. So, next steps, we are continuing to try to get some independent cost estimates of what potential payback would be for the wholesale sales outside of the outages, looking at some of the grant opportunities, get some costs around these alternatives. We're communicating with the Water Commission, the Sierra Commission, School Committee, Advisory Committee, Capital Budget Committee, um, about this, so there's a lot of socialization going on, just to keep them up to speed, and they are impacted, uh, benefit from this. And then, we're working with MEMA to complete the application, address their questions, finalize the proposal, and, and additional outreach to potential partners who can help us with addressing what we anticipate are some of your concerns related to costs, revenues, and other grant opportunities. That's the update. Speed dial.
Thank you, Tanya. That was great. That was a great speed round and fantastic detail, and you're right, it's not normal. We, we all think that after every storm, so thank you for your constant passion on this issue. I know the citizens really appreciate it. What questions do we have for Tanya? Diane?
Just really quickly, our next step really is waiting for this decision on January twenty-eighth.
Um, yeah, we're, we have the interim step of working with MEMA to see if we can, if, if they accept our analysis and our assumptions that go into that. Uh, they've never done a microgrid assessment before, so they're sort of learning as they go along. And the next, like, press send is gonna be January twenty-eighth.
I, I hope that'll help us and not hurt us that they've never done one before.
That's what I keep telling them.
We'll be so cutting-edge and innovative, right?
Well, you know, as you see with the California, and, and some of you are, you know, on the distribution list for the Alternative Energy Committee, and, um, there's a microgrid. I mean, it's just, this is what is happening and what, what a lot of, um, folks are looking at as a solution to problems, some of whom don't have the big problems we have. So, I, I think we're in the right place, and I think it's the right time. I think this is gonna be the cheapest it's ever gonna be. It still may be too expensive for this town.
Yeah.
And that's fine, and that's fine. Our job's to bring it to you and have you decide.
Other questions? Cory?
Yeah, just, I mean, uh, Tanya, thanks for showing the letters of support. That's really kind of impressive. And I think if we wanna get this funded and get as much funding as possible, having, you know, cross-industry support is gonna be huge. Uh, but I also wanted to just publicly, I, I, we talked about this earlier, but I wanna thank you for putting passion behind this with the understanding that it's more than likely that we either don't get approved, or the dollar is so high that, you know, it doesn't happen. And, and I think, you know, uh, this board, it's, it's good for us to understand that, you know, this is an, from your point of view, this is an outcome-driven, you know, conversation. Like, if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. This isn't a pie in the sky, and that you are, your committee is okay with saying, hey, we tried, and this doesn't work. But if it does work, it works 'cause the, the numbers work. So, I, I appreciate that perspective you bring, because, you know, I, I think letting the data lead our decisions is, is really the best way to do it. So, thanks for that.
Jean?
Yeah, I would echo what Cory said, and also presenting alternative options and sort of cost-benefit analysis of that is really helpful as we try to sift through, frankly, different options that we have. Some are more expensive, but maybe more effective, but maybe not. And so, um, we appreciate your leadership on these really complicated topics, and also the presentation of options as well, which is helpful.
Great. Thanks. Jack?
Yeah, I, I would echo that, uh, Tanya. I think you guys are doing an awful lot of hard work, and, and I would echo what, uh, Cory has said. Very important that this be driven by the bottom line at the end. Um, these types of long-term capital improvements for infrastructure are long-term, and we also have to remember that while we are awash in money right now, um, historically, things go up and down, so we need to have something that's sustainable when money is short. But then again, you guys are working really hard, and, and I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, Tanya, for staying, for staying on so late. We really appreciate it. This is exciting that we're moving forward, and you, you've really done an ambitious timeline here to get this done, so thank you. This is exciting that we're moving forward and you, you've really done an ambitious timeline here to get this done, so thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you for the help and support and, um, I, this is just one of those problems our town has.
Yep.
Hopefully it's a nut that we can crack, so.
We'll be in touch in January.
Bye.
Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who helped with this.
Vote to close the hearing in a second.
Yeah, yeah. That's actually a great motion, Jack. So
Anybody want to repurchase?
One sentence for the people here. We have our, our tax classification for fiscal year twenty-two that we started last meeting. We never got to close that hearing. What's the official language we need to?
You're already voting.
Okay, Jack's made the motion. We have a second? All, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Okay, wonderful. Moving on to cemetery plot repurchases for Beachwood.
There are six, um, Lynn, a woman in Lynn Briggs is looking to sell six graves back, five dollars a grave, three thousand dollars. And then resell.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
That's good.
I'll let Cory take that one.
Good price.
It's all contracts.
It's all set, Diane.
All right, do, do we have a motion?
So I move that we repurchase the, um, six, uh, cemetery lots for a total of three thousand dollars.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? No. Okay, I hate to say it, we have one topic not reasonably anticipated that Chris sent out over email. This is actually really important. It's based on, um, a, a settlement that our Attorney General of Massachusetts has been working on dealing with the opioid crisis and opioid distributors, and I believe that we need to vote to participate in this, Chris, or take an official vote on it. So real quick, can you give us the gist? I know, I, he sent out an email.
Yeah, yeah.
Cory?
Speed round questions?
Yeah.
Uh, just the math, this, uh, I tried to do the math with two of these zeros, but it looks like we get like, how much money? It's a fraction of the fifteen percent minimum that the state will get. Yes. Uh, i- i- and, and it's based, that number was based on population and the, and the I saw the fraction. I was trying to map, I didn't know what the
We have no idea.
The, the percentage is based on your population.
Take it.
I'm getting to, could this be for safe harbor? And the
Possibly.
The money could be, the money could be used for safe harbor. Because if we're gonna take this and put it in the flood and say, this is for safe harbor.
Good idea. It might not be that much, but something like that could be important.
I mean, it might just buy us a year, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I, I spoke with the, uh, senior enforcement council today. Her name is Gillian Finer, who has, like, who's the host. And, um, um, so I also confirmed today with counsel, uh, that, that we're used to formally vote to, 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 to join the settlement. It's been negotiated at a level, the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts managing the state's piece. The boy minister files and sign on, the better, the more money comes in. The formulas are all set. It's not like, you know, we can negotiate a better deal or a different deal.
Okay.
Um, and, um, uh, we'll know better in January, how many people have signed up and where it's going. Um, and the fifteen percent is a minimum distribution to the municipalities affected, and, uh, it could go higher. Uh, and, and where they're working on standards, they don't have that whole like that.
Okay. And I respect that. We want a lot of communities to join just for solidarity and power. And we, again, we all know someone in our community, in this community, dealt with this issue, that struggled with opioid addiction and this crisis. So I, I see this as being a no-brainer personally. Jean?
Um, well, yeah, just to give like a minute of context, this is the prosecution against Purdue and the Sapp.
Yes.
This is the money from that case that was led by, um, General Peely.
Yep.
And really led by Gillian Finer and Sandy Alexander, who we owe a debt of gratitude to because they brought the first case in America and then the rest of the APs signed on. There was a litigated, it was a really just vigorous litigation.
Yep.
And it was because Massachusetts fought so hard that we now are the beneficiaries of this. So I would recommend we sign on. There's no downside. It's not like we have claims we would otherwise lose. And, um,
I'll second that.
There's, there's no downside to this.
Okay, so would, do we need an official language for this? I believe you put it
You should, you should, wish it authorized, joining the settlement so you can read the top, carry
Okay. All right, so I will read. The government entity identified in order to obtain in consideration for the benefits provided for the government entity pursuant to the settlement agreement dated July twenty first, twenty twenty-one, and acting through the undersigned authorized official hereby elects to participate in the distributor settlement, release all released claims against all released entities and agrees to as follows.
You don't have to read.
We won't read that whole thing. And then
We'll do it, sir.
This is for Jay and Jay. Same thing. The government entity identified above in order to obtain and in consideration for the benefits provided to the governmental entity pursuant to the settlement agreement dated July twenty first, twenty twenty-one, the Jansen settlement, and acting through the undersigned authorized official hereby elects to participate in the Jansen settlement, release all released claims against all released entities and agrees to as follows. Okay. Do we need to make two separate motions or can we make, it could seem to be one motion? All right.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but, you know, predatory law, I'd like to find out how much the attorney should making out of the money that came out of that, but that's
Not related to your vote.
That's not delaying my vote.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We have that motion to adjourn. We have a second, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye, aye, opposed?
Nay.
All right, can you just sign this?
In the record, too bad.
I just need you to sign this.